Are you ready? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. This is going to be for June 5th. And I'll ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And I just want to make a brief announcement that for those of you who may have had interest, the Lions Club was, the Lions Club was supposed to be heard regarding a permit for a special truck event, but that application has been withdrawn. And apparently they're not planning any such events this year. That's the Lions Club for the Berlin Fairgrounds. Okay, moving on to the roll call, Maureen.
Here.
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 Scott Campbell.
He's online. Scott, you're online. Can you hear us?
I'm here.
Okay, terrific. Here.
Here.
No, he's usually a few minutes behind, so. Okay. Yeah, okay. Alrighty, so we have a quorum.
Yeah, well, a quorum of regular citizens.
All right, terrific. All right, so the first point of business is under commission business is site plan application for Chris Downey for the construction of a 20,000 square foot office warehouse building, a 28 space parking lot and site improvements at Zero Clark Drive, MBL 17-2-133-18E in the PI zone. And good evening.
Good evening. Can you give me one second? I'm gonna try to do this on your screen.
Oh, sure, go right ahead.
It works.
It's technology, you know. Just think when we get to the AI stuff. I know, but oh, it's scary.
So while he's doing that, I'm just gonna correct the, the agenda is correct and the everything else except the staff report just has the MAC block and lot out of order. It's MAPS 17-2, Lot 133, Lot 18E, which is the way it's listed on the agenda, but your staff report just has it.
Oh, okay.
So.
All right.
How's the baby?
Excellent.
Ben.
Yeah.
How's your kids doing?
Well.
How's your, is your daughter out of veterinary school?
She. She has a small cough and some lard.
Good.
She's.
Warrior's alive. You're gonna get two.
It's gonna, it's gonna fly open. I'll look like 20 times.
God, it's right there. She's good. That's exciting.
Ready for this one?
Oh, I was supposed to, I was supposed to do this. So we have to look up, look for the agenda. Oh. Last week. How about this week?
Should be coming in, yeah.
What's your problem this time?
Oh, no. This format of webinar is a little slower than when we were able to do Zoom meetings, but it's more secure.
I can't believe it's making me authenticate now.
So, I mean, it should be.
The ASMR should be recording. I think so we don't get reverberation, you're gonna have to turn your.
Right now? You may need to promote me.
Tries, tries to call my phone. Just to text. Sweet Jesus. Okay.
See it? It is.
Maybe we can look at this stuff. I think Scotty sent a text. Scotty sent a text.
She's drinking.
No.
It doesn't work to a second, but. Says it's. Let's try it as you with the screen. Look at the rest later.
Are we gonna do this the old fashioned way?
We're gonna.
They have, they have the same.
Okay, all right, this works for me.
The file, we're sorry.
No, 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 that's okay, that's okay.
They'll start a while the slides come up, so. Good evening, for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy, I'm a professional engineer and principal, Burma Hall C. Pearson Cassidy, my office is at 630 Main Street in Cromwell, Connecticut. I'm pleased to be here this night, representing Haywood Homes LLC, who is the owner of a property located at lot, the address is actually Zero Clark Drive. It's actually also known as Lot 18E Clark Drive. Westwood Real Estate Holdings, basically the same entity, will be the developer and ultimate applicant for this proposal. So up on your screen, I'm gonna start with an existing site photo. This is a Google Earth photo of the parcel that we're talking about. The parcel is outlined in red on the top or up to the top is Clark Drive. North is up on this page. Off to the east or right, there is an existing, sorry, an existing industrial building owned by JJ Nap Enterprises with an address of 133 Commerce Drive. If you can zoom up a little bit or pan up a little bit to see the bottom. I don't think you have a full screen there. Can you maximize that screen? So to the bottom, we are boarded by existing residents. Those are residents that are along Redwood Lane that are in the residential district. And then off to the left or to the west, we're bounded by another industrial building that's under the name of HMC Berlin Investments. There's actually several buildings on this property and actually wraps all the way around the cul-de-sac with about four buildings on the entire site, but again, it's an industrial property. The property itself is on PI, Planned Industrial Zone. The overall area of the site is 76,985 square feet or 1.76 acres. We have 300 and, 300 feet exactly of frontage along Clark Drive. Present condition of lot, you can see it's a vacant lot. It appears that this lot has been cleared sometime in the past, not exactly sure when, but when you go out there today, the front portion, I'll say the front two, three quarters, sorry, is covered with second growth consisting of saplings and scrubs for upgrowth. Except for the far west, there is some meadow on that far west side.
Excuse me one second, can you touch your, that's working, so we just got information that it's hard to hear, so yeah.
Get a little closer.
And really good.
Sure.
And we'll try again.
So the topography of the site, you start at the bottom, which is the northeast corner, the bottom right corner, sorry, southeast corner, the bottom right corner, which is your high point, where the elevation is about 80, sloping generally in a westerly direction to the left, where the lower area along that westerly property line is 51, so the grade across the overall property I would say is moderate. There is a small wetlands area at the southwestily corner or bottom left corner showing his teal on this plan. The property is not in a designated flood zone. And I'll also point out, this is the last lot, vacant lot, within the Clark Drive Commerce Way subdivision. Can you go through two more slides? One more. So the applicant's proposal is to build a brand new one-story building that would be mainly a warehouse use, but also could have some very small office space. We're looking at a building that's 200 feet wide along the frontage and 100 feet deep for a total area of 20,000 square feet. It could be broken up actually into five pieces, so 5,000, five, sorry, four, 5,000 square foot spaces. Based upon their current proposal of warehouse use, your park, your parking regulations requires provide one space for every thousand square feet of area, requiring 20 spaces in total. To the front of the building, we're proposing a total of 28 spaces, we're at 1.4 spaces per thousand square feet. You are proposing two accessways, can you slip one more slide? Show us a little bit together, better on a photo. We are proposing two accessways. You'll see one on the far right or northeast corner and one to the far left to the northwest corner. One to the right is to provide access to the parking area in front of the building. In addition to, you're gonna see four crosshatch areas that come right up to the face of the building. Those are intended to be loading areas for each one of these spaces. Now, we propose to put the loading areas to the front of this building to be sensitive to the residents to the back, to have all the loading up to the front. We are providing access to the back primarily for security purposes. So you'll see the driveway on the left-hand side that would come around that left side of the building and then around to the back, providing access to that area too. We set it up in a way where you really can't get a, a delivery truck in there. That area is only 42 feet deep. So just to give you a reference, in a common parking lot, if you have an 18-foot space and a 24-foot drive aisle, that's 42 feet. So if I have a larger vehicle parked particularly to the building, there's 24 feet to get by. So it's not accommodating for a single unit over with 30-foot wheelbase. Go to the next slide. So for your zoning, can you bring it down a little? So for your zoning regulations in the PI zone, there are obviously several sections of the regulations we need to meet. In particular, the first one is lot area. In the PI zone, it says you need to have a minimum of five acres. This is existing non-conforming lot being 1.7 acres. So it's, again, it's existing non-conforming, it's not a non-conforming we're creating. In addition to, we need 200 feet of frontage, as I mentioned, we're at 300 feet of frontage. Yard setbacks, there's a 50-foot front yard setback, the front of this building is at 82 feet. Side yards are at 30 required and we're about 31.7 and 68.3. More importantly is the rear yard, there's a 30-foot setback requirement, but also because we bought a residential zone, that 30 feet needs to be a buffer area, which I'll get into a little bit to show you how we're going to improve the buffer area here. In addition to, it is, your max requirement is three stories, we're at one story with the building that actually has a total height of about 26 feet where the max height requirement is 45 feet. So zoning wise, we meet and exceed all the requirements. Can you continue on?
Okay.
Stormwater runoff for the site, as I mentioned, everything is sloping to the left, so in a westerly direction. We're proposing is to have the front area and the rear parking areas discharge or to drain to some catch basins at the north and south side of the parking lot. From there, they'll be conveyed through a pipe system underneath that westerly access drive into a stormwater management basin along the entire westerly property line. It's a long linear basin with a outlet structure at the far north end. Primary function of the basin is to treat stormwater quality and also provide some attenuation before it discharges into the drainage system in Clark Drive. Go to the next slide. The basin is going to be seeded with a meadow mix around the perimeter, which is shown in a light green. And the bottom will be a wet bottom basin, so it'll be planted with a wetlands mix along the bottom and maintained, the vegetation kept cut down. Continue one more slide. Utilities are pretty simple to the site. On the top, you see lines in purple, that's the existing water main, it runs along our frontage, providing water service off that main directly into the building. Right now, it's designed for a domestic water line and then also a possible six-inch fire line. But that's gonna be dependent upon the final building's design as to the actual size of water services that will be required. In green is a sanitary sewer line, which will gravity out the front of the building and tie into the existing maintenance in Clark Drive. All other utilities such as gas, electric and communication will all be underground. So no overground, underground utilities associated with this development. Next slide, please. Landscaping, as I mentioned, along the rear of the property, we're required to have a 30-foot buffer. The only real vegetation of significance out there right now is deciduous trees along the property line. A couple of things we are proposing to do is number one, to minimize the grade and the slope required for the construction of this building is we're proposing to build a block retaining wall along the back edge of the parking lot so we can minimize the cut and leave the grade where it is at the same elevation it is today. So in the back there, at the northeast most corner, there's gonna be a retaining wall that's about eight feet in height and then as you go to the west, it tapers down to two feet. Along the top of the retaining wall, proposing to plant a staggered row of blue giant, our green giant arborvitae's for a total of 48 of them to make a nice dense hedgerow between us and the residents to the back. In the front, within the islands of the parking lot, we're looking at putting a canopy tree, I think we have black tuba in the islands along the frontage, and then additionally along the actual frontage of the site, we are also looking at putting red maples. And then with the sidewalk configuration against the front of each one of these units, you end up with a small landscape island between the sidewalk and the building. So we're gonna put, we're looking at putting a little shrub such as boxwoods in those islands. And again, the detention basin to the west will be landscaped with seeding, seed mix. Can you continue on to the next slide? As part of your package, we did submit a photometrics plan. There are proposed to be pole lights in the islands along the street side of the front parking lot. Those will direct light back into our parking lot. All lighting fixtures will be high efficiency LED fixtures with full cutoff, dark sky compliant. In addition to, along the back, we are proposing to put lower level building mounted lights just to keep for security purposes along the back of the building to make sure that it's a secure site back. The next slide. Down to the bottom of this one. So the building itself, similar to any other industrial building that's in this development, it's going to be a steel frame building. Typically is going to be a vertical metal panel, but in this particular building, different than a lot of the buildings in the, in the existing industrial park, we're proposing that the bottom of seven feet, so up to the height of the door and the windows, will actually be a brick veneer. Then above that is going to be a vertical metal panel. The applicant's also looking to put a decorative canopy over the front of each one of the entry doors, then windows along the front into each of the spaces. But then the sides would be a vertical metal panel, again, similar to all the other buildings that are presently in the industrial park. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the primary use of the building is gonna be warehousing. You can see in the floor plan, there's not even an office shown. There's just a restroom shown in each one of the four spaces, so everything else is gonna be storage. We are proposing an overhead door on the front opposite the loading space, a passage door on the front. In addition to a passage and overhead door to the back, but again, it's, the back is not really set up or conducive to receive deliveries as of the depth of the pavement. It's more for smaller items or pickup truck to be able to actually drive into the building to pick something up. Is that the last slide? The roach inside of my control plan. Come on. One more. I said, okay. So that's an overview. So that's an overview of what we're looking to for the site. I'll let you know that we did receive staff comments. I did get the engineering comments today, so I had a chance to review them. I have not had a chance to talk to Mr. Hearn, I understand he's out of the office. But I just wanted to go over them briefly with you. In his comment, number one, he says a traffic study or narrative is not included in the package we received. We had not included a traffic study in that this is a site plan use. In going through your site plan requirements, it doesn't say a traffic study is required. Your special permit require, requirement, section thirteen of your zoning regulations, it does say if you're coming in with a special permit application, you also meet certain criteria such as having more than fifty dwelling units, over a hundred parking spaces, or over twenty-five thousand square feet of building area, a traffic study is required. So we had not prepared one because of the size of the project and also because it is not a special permit, it is a site plan. Again, right now, we're looking at a warehouse use. If, I think in Maureen's report, she's going to mention that if we change the uses or we want to come in with anything that falls under the special permit criteria, we'd have to go back to this commission for approval for those special permit items. But right now, the person that's looking at is just going to be warehousing goods in it.
I interject for one second just on the traffic study. So I did have a back and forth with Mike, our town engineer, and he misread the regulation with regard to the traffic study. So he agrees that one was not required and it doesn't meet the parameters. So I did have to back that up before, which I had said, so I didn't ask for a traffic study to start with, so. Okay.
His comment number two deals with, I'm not going to read it verbatim, but it deals with the retaining wall that I mentioned along the back of the property. And this is common. We have a retaining wall that's over forty feet in height, actually over three feet in height. It actually requires that we obtain a building permit and also is designed by a structural engineer. We give a general design in our plans, so you have a profile, you know, the height and the material we're looking at using. We're looking at using what's called a big block system here, which is the larger concrete blocks. Purpose for doing that is, if anyone's seen when you build a larger, we'll examine the escape block retaining wall, they have what they call a geo grid that needs to go out the back of it. That causes more disturbance out the back. And I don't want to get, I don't want to impact any trees in the back close to the residence. So by going to big block system, we can minimize our excavation and have a stable wall. But ultimately, we understand that when we go to construction, building permit needs to be filed, structural plans need to be filed by the manufacturer of the wall. So we will comply with all of that. His next comment deals with stormwater management plan. And we have provided, on the plan, we provided the stormwater layout and detention basin we're proposing. He's requesting some test pit data. I thought we had had it on the plan, but apparently didn't. But we have done soil testing here, and I'm more than confident that we have adequate soil conditions latest in two thousand twenty-four DEP Stormwater Quality Manual. And then finally, he just has some miscellaneous comments that need to be addressed on the plan. I also received comments from Maureen. I briefly went through them this afternoon, and I really don't see any issues with them and gladly would accept them as conditions of approval. So with that, I know you have a long night, so I'm going to conclude my presentation and hopefully take any quick questions the commission may have.
Terrific. Questions, commission? Well, June has her hand up, and then Maureen, if you have any comments you'd like to?
Just a minor question. You've done a nice job explaining it, laying it out. On the trees on the southern back line, are they based on your property? Is there an advantage to keeping the trees that are there and supplement?
I'm going to keep the trees on, there's larger deciduous trees along the property.
Oh, okay, I guess I didn't understand that.
Since I can.
Okay.
Looks like it's been cleared one time in the past, so there's not a lot of larger trees as you get close to that property. It's a good slope that goes up there. We're going to have to cut into it slightly but not damaging the root structure. Then again, fill it back up to grade and then plant the hedgerow on top of that retaining wall.
And I did have a second question. On the southern, western, where the blue is highlighted, how does, so the capture basin along the west that you have from front to back, and then if it doesn't hold it all, it goes to the further back left corner?
No, it goes to the drainage system out front.
Out front, okay.
The only thing that really goes to that little blue back right now is a little bit of the backyards from the houses on Redwood. Most of the site actually drains directly to the parking lot to the west and then into their system and then to drainage system out in the road. So it's a very small little area, it's very like tip wetlands area. And I should mention that we did file for a wetlands permit and we obtained that wetlands permit back in January of this year.
Okay, so it's unlikely that that would be filled with?
We're not, we're not touching, we're proposing no impacts on it.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else have any questions? No, Maureen, do you have any comments?
I have very little except having talked to Mike in cursory, like he said he was out of the office, but that, again, traffic study not applicable. And, again, Jim addressed the comments regarding the retaining wall, utilities to be underground, all those, and the, you know, Jim really addressed everything, I think. The, it would be typ, I just want to note that it would be typical for an occupant of one of the units to possibly ask for accessory office space to be fit out inside. That would be something that we would generally handle administratively in the permitting system as an accessory. You know, he could have a small office to run his business if the business was being, was there. It just wouldn't be changing the category to office use would change the parking.
Yeah.
Not the accessory office for the warehouse or the uses.
All right.
As far as the comments, I think the staff comments are mostly technical in nature as far as the parking chart updated to reflect the parking now at this point. There, the initial application was for indicated special permit uses and they modified that so that they are not applying for that at this time, as he stated. So if anyone had seen that application, that's invalid. They substituted out the site plan uses as, and so therefore, any related notes that might be lingering on the plans just get updated would be my note on that.
Okay.
And then all the typical comments we would normally make.
Yeah, it seems pretty cleaned up, and my concern was for the neighbors in the back, but that was addressed because they have some lovely homes and I'd hate to have that disturbed. All right, further comments, commission? Scott Hamel online, do you have any questions?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, terrific. Well, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve with staff comments.
Okay.
One second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rogan, we have a second by Ms. Jorsy. Further discussion, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved, thank you. Moving into the public hearings, do we have a call for the added? Okay. Mr. Rogan, if you please read the call.
Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearings. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at a regular meeting on Thursday, June fifth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven PM in the Town Council Chambers, Berlin Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearings in person or remotely as provided below. Zone change application of ID Family LTD partnership for MBL twenty-one dash four dash one fifty-three dash thirteen from BT two to PI, MBL twenty-one dash four dash one fifty-three dash twelve from BT two to PI, and MBL twenty-one dash four dash one fifty-three dash eleven A from R fifteen to PI. Text amendment application of Arthur Shaler to add new car automobile dealership auto storage lots to two B definitions and six dot G dot three BT one special permit uses. Applications and related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Berlin Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut, dated this twenty-first day of May, two thousand twenty-five, at Berlin, Connecticut. Brian Rogan, Secretary, Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission. New Britain Herald Legal Notices slash Classified Advertising Dates of Publication, Saturday, May twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, Friday, May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, posted with Berlin Town Clerk, Wednesday, May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, first off, with the public hearings, we have item A is a special permit with site plan application of Sal Morello for the construction of nine one-story metal Butler-style buildings at zero four Rod Road, MBL fifteen dash three dash one oh seven dash two A, property of JSJ Berlin Development LLC in the PI zone. This was opened on April third, continued to May fifteenth, and we have an extension for the closing date. But, so we are actually still in the public hearing, and so we're going to continue on and see what we have. I know we left you with some feedback last meeting. And hopefully, we'll be pleasantly surprised. Hey, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, 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 thank you.
For the record, Luke Sofair, professional engineer with John Paul Garcia and Associates, office address one ninety Fairwood Road in Bethany.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to bring them up on the screen, Alexa? I will comment while we are getting the plans up on screen. One of the concerns of the commission at the last meeting was that we had not received the town engineer's review on the revised plans. We did receive that today. Just to touch on his comments, he incurred with the revised traffic study that was submitted regarding one driveway versus two driveways. Just to summarize what was stated last time, the conclusion of our traffic engineer is that the existing roadway network can readily support either one driveway or two driveways, with the one driveway being only out to four rod road. The town engineer agreed with that assessment, and it's up to the commission to decide if they would want the gate, a gate installed on the driveway out to Norton Road. For his comment number two, it was a very similar comment to what it sounds like was stated for the previous one about a structural engineer certifying the wall. We do have a engineered detail on our plan, and we understand that a building permit will be required and a sign-off will be required by a licensed structural engineer as part of that and take no issue to that being made a condition of approval. His comment three was regarding our stormwater plan. He has reviewed and agreed with the conclusions of the stormwater management plan that was submitted, which states that for all storm events up to and including the hundred-year storm, the volume and the peak runoff rate leaving the site is below pre-development for all storm events, again. Item four, he agreed with our revised stormwater plan again. He did propose one condition of approval regarding evaluating one of the downstream catch basins, which is off of our site, further off down to the south on four rod road. We take no issue with including that. We can go take a look if he has concerns regarding the hydraulic capacity of that. He had some concern it might be silted. We can certainly take a look at that, and if it needs to be cleaned, we can coordinate that with public work. So we take no issue with that being a condition. Item five, he has reviewed the photometric plan and agrees that it meets zoning. And item six, he stated that there were a couple of typos and editorial comments. He did not specify which ones those were, but that's something that we can work on with him. So moving on to the changes that have been made to the plan since the last meeting, again, it's a pretty full agenda, so I won't touch on every single sheet. I'll touch on the ones that have been revised. So sheet C one oh five, there was discussion about landscaping.
He's changing the page. It just takes a minute because there's so much detail on it.
Yeah.
Just for them to load on the computer.
Which one is that? Is that the big, long, the big tall one? Okay, so that's this one here, right? All right, thank you.
Thank you. So there was comments regarding the proposed double layer of evergreen arbivites along the town-owned cemetery. We had previously shown it along the western edge, the eastern edge of our parcel. At the request of the commission, we did expand that to include the south. So now the entirety of the town-owned cemetery has that double layer of arbivites. Additionally, there was a request to enhance the buffer along the street even further. The previous buffer did meet the town requirements in terms of depth and number of plantings. We have expanded that to be a fifteen-foot-deep buffer. And in addition to the required large deciduous trees, we've included some shrubs and some understory trees, which again, when they fill in, it'll give even more shielding to the existing residential across the street. There was one comment I'd like to respond to at the last meeting. It was a question about why the proposed buffer did not extend all the way up to the property line at Norton, or similarly to the property line to the south along four rod. I'll address those separately. So to the west of Norton Road, there's a pretty healthy stand of trees there currently, a full canopy of high deciduous and some shrubs as well. The zoning regulation, section ten, specifically encourages the retention of existing mature forest as credit for a landscape buffer. And if anyone who's driven by that road looks, Mother Nature is going to do a way better job than we would with putting in some eight-foot trees. The intention there is to preserve the existing trees as credit. And then along four rod road, if you scroll down to the bottom of the page, Alexa. That's the area of the wetlands, so there is again a pretty healthy stand of reeds right there currently. So we show the proposed landscape buffer going up to the limit of disturbance, which is the fifty-foot upwind review area. Everything from there, we're not proposing wetlands disturbance at the request and requirement of the wetlands regulations. We're preserving that existing area as shielding. That is the area where the buildings and any proposed improvements are the furthest away from the street. And again, under the section ten, we're using those areas as credit for landscaping. Moving to sheet C one eleven, there was a request made by the commission to include a lighting photometric plan. We have included that. The lighting will be achieved by a combination of downlights that are attached to the building as well as some light poles within the parking lot. All light fixtures are going to be shielded downlights that are full cutoff, dark sky compliant. Those are basically just the photometric data. In compliance with zoning regulations, there's no light spill off the property. I would also like to discuss the architectural plans, so that would be a separate file. So at the request of the commission, after the last meeting, we did go back to the drawing board with the architect. The previous intent was for a metal-clad building, similar to a typical industrial Butler-style building. There were concerns expressed that it would not be consistent with the architectural character of the neighborhood. We went back and have redrawn the plans. The buildings will now have a traditional siding, a stone veneer for the bottom four feet. We've added some windows along the sides of the buildings. The garage doors are more ornamental style now. As well as just the architectural design is meant to evoke a barn or a more typical residential-style construction. These can now be built wood-framed as compared to the metal. So overall, hopefully, the commission agrees that this will fit very nicely and be a welcome addition to the neighborhood. Excuse me. Finally, just going back to the site plan, I would like to touch, which would be sheet C one or two, Alexa? I would like to touch briefly on sidewalks. So sidewalks were discussed at the previous meeting at a little bit of length. We did go back and we reevaluated the site in terms of sidewalks, and it is still our professional opinion that this site does not support sidewalks. We understand that it's up to the discretion of the commission. However, along Norton Road, there is really no ability to extend the sidewalks further up to the west. Just to the west of our site would be the town-owned cemetery, which has a retaining wall right up against the street line. There'd be no way to extend it there. And a little further up, you have the railroad bridge along Norton Road, which has no area along the bridge for pedestrian accessway along the south side of the street. So our concern with including sidewalks along Norton Road would be that people would take the sidewalks along the front of our site, the south side of Norton Road, not knowing that they didn't continue, and they would end up at the western edge of our property, be forced to cross the street in the middle of a street where there's no crosswalk, signalized intersection, stop sign, anything like that. And it would result in an unsafe condition compared to currently. You can have people crossing at the crosswalks down at the intersection of Norton and four rod, where there is an existing sidewalk along the north side of Norton Road. So that addresses Norton. For four rod, and this was raised as well by the town engineer, the, I believe it was stated at the last meeting that the west side of four rod road is not stated for sidewalks because of the wetlands. There are significant wetlands starting at the area of our site driveway, continuing south along four rod. south along Four Rod. So any sidewalks along the west side of Four Rod Road would involve direct wetlands disturbance to install, would require additional permits if they would even grant it from the inland wetlands agency. So in conclusion, we understand that it's up to the discretion of the commission if they want to see sidewalks. And if the majority of the commission does decide that it's something you want to see for, we'd buy the plan that would show that. But it's our professional opinion that this site is not suited for sidewalks. That's a summary of our changes and responses from the last meeting. We did receive a revised staff report from Maureen. We've reviewed the proposed comments, conditions of approval. We take no issues with any of them. And we will welcome any comments from the commission or staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, commission, any comments at this point? Any questions? Then because it's part of the public hearing, I'll ask if the public has... I'm sorry, if the public wishes to address the commission regarding the applicant, now would be the time to either speak for or against this application. We are in the public hearing. I'd ask that you step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll hear your comments. Thank you. I see we have one person so far.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Romas. I live at 671 Four Rod Road, which is right across the street from this complex. So it's funny, because you use the same words that I used this morning when I came to see what changed. And I was pleasantly surprised to see these buildings. This is way better than what we had there, the sheds. I'm still a little wondering, I still have some more questions, but, you know, I don't know if they're going to be as loud, if they're really metal, or if it's just siding. But, you know, I really like the look of them, way better, 100% better. So I did want to say that publicly.
All right.
They are way better.
Then we're on the right track.
Yeah, yeah, we're going in the right direction.
Right, right direction, okay.
I feel that way anyways. But I still have some questions. Like, the, I'm not 100% sure, because I live across the street from this plan, what is going in there? Who are the renters? I do see that something was updated recently about the definition of the contractor shops. So, but, so I did see, you know, it said plumbing, electricians, HVAC, carpentry, manufacturing, printing, but it was added offices. And what concerned me is warehousing and distribution, because I'm thinking distribution, slew of trucks, or, you know, things that could be left outside or parked outside. So that was one of my concerns. And I just think that that should be, you know, whatever business is in there should be an important factor on whether or not this gets approved. I just feel strongly, I know you can't choose exactly what's going to go in there yet, because you might not have his renters. But I'm just wondering, how does he vet these people, who is going to be there? And I think my question came because the name of the place is Commerce Park. Commerce means the buying and selling items, products, and exchange for goods. So I'm like wondering, does this have maybe a future of being retail? I'm not sure what, I don't know what the expectations are here for what is going in. As you can see, I made a lot of different notes today. We're a lot of good...
Well, it's important.
They did address a lot of the things we asked of them. So I had to make a lot of changes at the last minute. But, you know, with multiple companies going in there, and they're small businesses, we know that they do, you know, small businesses work late at night, and sometimes on Sundays, even on holidays sometimes. I just wonder, you know, with all these multiple companies, who is watching the store, basically? Like, there's no onsite administration plan. So, you know, I'm just wondering, who is accountable for what goes in there and what they do? I did see that there was a note about how the oversized trucks, it will be in the renters' lease, which I thought was fabulous, because this is what I'm, we're hoping for. This is what we want to see. And we did ask for. And we, we still have, we still would wish that there were less buildings and less pavement and more green spaces. But that is what we're putting out there, the neighbors in general. And we would love assurances that the traffic is not going to be increasing, like increased dramatically. We understand anything that goes in there, it's going to increase. But we're nervous about the amount of traffic, because it's really hard to walk your dog in that neighborhood right now. You can't walk, and people have been hit, and, you know, there's a lot of accidents at that corner. And they discussed sidewalks, but I'm hoping you talk about sidewalks again. And I'm glad they brought up the lighting plan, and they did bring that to, you know, that's another thing. I do have an interest in what goes in the maintenance building, and will it look like these? I'm thinking they're not going to put something that looks different, but I do have to bring it up. We don't know what the little maintenance building is that's kind of in front of my house. And last but not least, the landscaping plan shows the beautiful arbivites that are going to be tall in the back. But we, who look at a big parking lot in the front, would like arbivites, we would like even a fence, because we don't want to look at garage doors opening and closing and contractors leaving out their trailers. And we don't really want to look at that. So maybe arbivites, because I get two redwoods, I mean redwoods, red maples in front of my house, that's what I'm getting. And maybe some hedges. But I'm looking to raise it up a little bit, so I don't have to look at the parking lot. And hopefully, whether it's a fence, or especially in the meantime, because it's going to take decades for those trees to grow. And really, we're going to be staring at a huge parking lot. That's my, that's my front yard, which, like we had said before, we were looking for something set back. If it's not going to be set back, if we could just hide it from view, that would just make the whole neighborhood happier, and it would not decrease our value and our properties. So these are the things that I'm still wondering, but I'm glad that progress was made. I thank you for making sure that it was.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to guess?
Hi, Claudia Faducha, 644 Four Rod Road. So I would like you to address the dumpsters. Nobody addressed where the dumpsters are going to go. We have buildings on the other side of us, and at 4:00 AM, they're emptying the dumpsters. So I just would like to know where these are going to be. I have a big concern about the 18,000-square-foot building in the middle of this project. It just kind of, why? Why such a big building? And all the other buildings seem to be a little bit smaller, a lot smaller. Me, just don't understand that one. And I, I personally agree that there should not be a driveway on Norton Road. Norton Road is not a large road. And I think, you know, all the other buildings, areas on Four Rod, they only have one entrance and one exit. And the traffic, I'm still very concerned about the traffic. Came home today from work, and I was halfway down Norton Road by Willard School. The traffic was so bad. So, and I, I'm glad Rhonda addressed the maintenance building. I was kind of concerned about what that actually is, this wall maintenance building. So, but my big concern is the 18,000-square-foot building and the dumpsters. And thank you for addressing the lighting, but it is going to be very bright there. That's my concern.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I'll then come back to the commission. Do we have any questions? I know that I do. Tim, you have a question first? Okay. Yeah, you have to use your, because Scott Hamel has to hear you, and so does the audience on Zoom? Okay. I know.
Okay. I'm questioning that all buildings will be stick-built instead of a Butler-type building, which I appreciate if that's true, that they are built, stick-built, and siding will be similar for every building with that one up there. I can't believe I'm going to say this, but I, I, I agree after, after the study was done about sidewalks, that the side does not improve the sidewalks, especially to the cemetery, because those large established trees there would have to be taken out because of the sidewalks. You know, the sidewalks on Four Rod Road, I don't know what Wetlands would say about it. I would have asked to see if Wetlands does have a problem with the sidewalks along the property line here. And if the applicant, I guess we can't require no more sidewalks on the opposite side of the road. I don't want to require it, but if the property owner be nice enough to put sidewalks on the opposite side of the road, maybe that's, or complete the sidewalks on the opposite side of the road. You know, that may be something to help. The, I want to make sure that all staff comments are addressed, especially the profiles for the sewer lines, the elimination of pump station, and the options that they're looking for here of that water control are addressed. I want to make sure that all staff comments are addressed. And that's it right now.
Okay.
Can I speak to that, just while we're on the topic of water control, in case other commissioners were going to?
Sure, go right ahead.
I did speak to Ray at Water Control. His concern is he understands that there needs to be some sort of pump. The entire property cannot drain with gravity. He was amenable to installation of individual grinder-rejector pumps at the five buildings that would require some sort of mechanical assistance. So we will work to address that and update that in a set for the record. But we did speak to him. Don't see any major issue to his comments, and we will update accordingly on final set.
Okay. All right. Okay, so I'm going to start in with the layout of the plan, if you don't mind. All right, so I'd like to talk to you about the layout, and it looks like this is going to be, I'm looking at Four Rod Road. Can we go to the, to the layout of that? And while she's just bringing it up, I just wanted to say that I'm not opposed to the project, however, I just want us to have the best project. So bearing that in mind is going to drive my questions and my comments, okay? So the area that you have in the front on Four Rod Road, it seems to be like a huge parking area, right beyond the landscape. Is that correct? And who's that parking for?
For any buildings that would require it, the building closest to it for the maintenance building, or for...
All right, so all of this parking is supposed to be for all of these buildings? So I guess I'm getting a little bit confused, because I thought that the buildings themselves had their own parking. And if this was just basically a storage place where people would be coming in and going out, you know, picking up some supplies and then exiting?
The buildings themselves have parking for work trucks and for equipment and stuff like that.
Luke, just lean into the microphone as best you can.
Sorry, yes. The buildings will have a drive-in bay. That being said, we cannot control or reasonably dictate in the long term that there will be parking, or that any of these clients will, you know, need to use or want to use it for parking on the inside. So we've designed the site per parking standards for a standard use. Again, this is a, parking for this specific use, which is contractor shops, is up to the commission to determine. We've designed it around between two and a half and three spaces per bay, with the expectation that work trucks or equipment could be parked inside or parked in front of the buildings. Parking spaces would be used for employee parking.
Okay. All right, I'm going to accept that as the answer. I'm looking at building, it was brought up that building number five is a big building, and it sits in the middle of the complex. That's the one with the double, the double building. I guess my question is, why can't number five be moved over to where one and two is, which is against the railroad tracks? And bring one and two back, back down? Because, so that you don't have, you don't have this big building in the middle of the complex. It'll actually help buffer the railroad bridge, the railroad train too. So...
I think it's a reasonable question. We did look at, and we mentioned it in the past, and we did go back after we talked at the last meeting. We've looked at multiple layouts for this, including splitting the center building, which could be something if the commission would want to see a visual separation, so not to have an 18,000-square-foot building. We could do two 9,000-square-foot buildings with a 10-foot separation. The reason that the building, building five, is there is we tried to have in wherever possible, building share loading spaces, so that it reduces the total amount of impervious for the property.
That's a brilliant idea. Why can't we do that with all the buildings? Why can't we put them all together?
We do, wherever possible. We have the buildings, so we have the open doors of the buildings facing each other to share parking areas.
Okay.
But putting more buildings back-to-back wouldn't necessarily reduce the impervious. In all instances here, it would increase, because you'd have further parking areas. So if we were to do multiple other buildings back-to-back, you'd then need a loading area on both sides of the building, which would involve more impervious.
But aren't you having loading areas on the buildings anyway?
We are.
All right, so...
We allow, so if we have the loading area in front of the building, and then the drive aisle, it allows the drive aisle to be shared between the two buildings.
Okay. But if you, I'm just, I'm trying to understand. So if you put the two buildings together, you're going to have to have more loading areas?
Which buildings are you proposing to put together?
No, I'm just saying, you just look at this. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to make the project more condensed. And so less, less like mushrooms in a field, more like a complex. And I was thinking that if you're able to put building five together, why not look at putting other buildings together, so you have less buildings? You still will have a bigger building, as some of the neighbors have pointed out, but you might be able to get more landscaping in, a more interesting weave to the buildings, so that the trucks will give it more of a, a better feel to the project, as opposed to just sticking the project in there.
Understood. So to specifically look, I think I know what you're requesting now. So if we look at buildings one and two, as of now, they have a loading space in front of each building, and they share a 24-foot drive aisle. If we were to combine buildings one and two and have the loading spaces then face out to the north and south, each building would then require not only a loading space, but again, a 24-foot drive aisle. each building would then require not only a loading space, but again, a twenty-four-foot drive aisle to be able to access that loading space. So you'd end up with more driveways to access it, more drive aisles, more total impervious. We have looked at this. Our professional opinion is that in terms of disturbance to the property, grading impacts, reduction of impervious, this is the best layout that allows buildings to share driveways, share parking areas, and reduce the amount of grading and earthwork that needs to be done.
Okay, I'm sorry. Did you? No, okay. Tim? No, June? Okay, I'm sorry. June had her end up.
Just on topic, I'm trying to remember remember an earlier presentation. I think you said you have beyond what's necessary for the green space. Did I remember that right already? You currently have more.
So we do exceed the amount of landscaping. We are well under the required impervious, and we're well under the required building coverage and pour area.
And then the other thing, if we combine the buildings, to me, that would sound like that would bring it back to the worry of our our neighbors because they were worried about the bigger building versus the smaller building. So if we combined them, it seemed like that would make it more of.
Well, I was trying to visualize, and for me, I was just trying to visualize, would I rather have, you know, like nine buildings or would I rather have three bigger ones? And so with that, I know Scott Hamel is online, and he would like to ask a question or a comment. Scott?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Yes, we can.
There was a a mention of gates on these driveways.
Okay, yes.
The question I have to control this a little bit better, would there be a limit of time, so like say at eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock, those gates are locked and they're going to stay locked? Because I know there's other storage facilities on the turnpike, and there's other places where they they do not allow you in after a certain time. Those gates are locked and they're open at six in the morning. Is there anything that, I mean, they can, would be able to enforce any of this just to control what's going on in there?
That would not be the intention. So the intention would be to have the gate. If it was determined by the commission that they would only want one means of egress and ingress, would be to permanently gate the Norton Road entrance, keep it there for emergency access with, you know, the property, maybe the property owner and the fire department, whoever would be determined beneficial to have a key, but then the average person not having a key. But the, no, the intent would be to keep Four Rod Road entrance without a gate and free flowing.
Well, Madam Chair.
Yes.
The question I have is like to control what's going on, so this is not going on at one in the morning for the neighborhood, two in the morning, people aren't coming in and out of this all hours of the night. One of my my question is, can we possibly say, hey, listen, at twelve o'clock, these gates are locked? You know, you, I mean, is there anything that we can do about it as a commission to say, hey, listen, this is a great plan, but, you know, to control what's going on, coming in, going out, I mean, honestly, I can't see.
I think to your point, Scott, we would just have to ask them what their business hours would be. In other words, have them state for the record that the business hours would be like Monday. Wow.
What was that?
What's that?
I don't know. That was bar. Wow, I know, somebody's. Oh, it was very strange, and I was nowhere near it. Anyway, I I think that we would have to have them declare with the application what the the hours of business would be, say it's Monday through Friday, say seven to six P M. And maybe Saturday, you know, eight till noon or nine to one. But that that would be the way to control whether or not people were going in and out of the complex at all hours of the of the night.
You you know, the the concern I have, you know, to the to the board and everyone is that you get a motorcycle group in there that's going to fix motorcycles, and there's no restrictions on that, I'm sure, and this and that. Then all of a sudden, we have these guys zooming in and out there, one, two, three o'clock in the morning. I just don't think it's fair to the neighborhood. So to alleviate that, we put a gate there, and we say, listen, the gate locks at twelve o'clock. That's it. We're done.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Well, that's that's something we can definitely discuss.
I will say, in response to another comment about the motorcycles and as well, a comment raised by one of the neighbors, it is a condition of approval that's proposed by the town planner that individual fit out of the buildings, including the tenants, would still be subject to zoning permit, review and comment and, you know, permitting by the zoning office to ensure that any use in this complex is compliant with the PI zoning. So as part of that, if individual contractors would be required to provide hours of operation, we don't take any issue with that.
Okay. All right, that's good. Yes, Maureen.
In response to that, so we, the town itself has a couple of parameters there. One, you have your zoning regulations as far as what uses are allowed in which zone, and I don't believe auto repair would be one, so they wouldn't be able to be a location that had an auto-use license. If some contractor brought his bike there to work on, then, you know, that's a matter of probably a police call on whether or not it is disturbing the peace, you know, personal, personal use, you know, even changing your own oil in your in your truck, personal truck and at your business, you know, people do that and monitoring that and proof is is a thing to work on, but that's kind of a different matter. But the town also has the newly adopted last year noise ordinance that is much more restrictive than one we'd had in the past. And that has hours that relate to noise being heard off-site based on the activity that the manufacturer, manufacturing, including other businesses are conducting, so. And that's a twenty-four-seven rule that police monitor, so it's not, you have to catch the zoning officer. You can call the police department, and they have the meter to monitor noise.
All right. Any other guests? Tim?
Yes, I'm, I want to address the parking. Notice you did did, but how many park places are in in this plan right now?
Hundred and forty-seven.
That's counting the park places?
Said a hundred and fifty.
We reduced it when we reduced the size of building.
Okay.
So how many do we?
Hundred and forty-seven.
Okay, fir- first of all, you have park places in front of each unit, one park place in front of each unit. Except building number three, which doesn't have park places in front of the unit. Except they have a line of park places further up. What I'm looking at is that if you got fifty-eight units, one in front of each unit. So you have, both have fifty-eight park places right there, one in front of each unit. Why do we need this whole big parking lot in the front here? That would be towards the neighbors. Okay, I noticed you have a whole row of park places back here in front of building number three. You know, I don't see any more than basically a total hundred park places being need needed, because you do have the unit, the one in front of each unit. And you don't need all these other park places. With the park places here, which could be buffered area. Okay. Mainly to the homes on Forward Road. And the other park places would be, the other thing I see that each bank of park places does not have a handicap spot in each bank. I think it's going to be required that you have a handicap in each bank. If they're servicing the buildings. The building number three, the park places in front do not have a handicap parking place. The buildings in the rear of two and one do not have handicap places.
Is that a requirement? Is that a requirement?
So the building inspector.
With the type of.
Regarding to the layout, monitors the handicap spaces and their proximity and where they are. That's in building code. I don't believe they made a comment on that from the building department.
But, you know.
For permitting.
I see.
But that is something they handle when they review the site plan, and that has to get shipped.
Building number four has two handicap parking places. Okay.
Where do you see that?
Just to the front, the four roadside of park places, there's two handicap places.
Oh, I see. Oh, yeah, yeah, little guys in the, okay.
Okay.
Go off of what Maureen said. There is no requirement. Am I, certainly not in the building code, to my knowledge, not in the Town of Berlin zoning code, that each bank of parking needs a handicap space. It would just be proximity to the buildings, which, again, we would coordinate with the building official, and he did not have any comments on that.
Okay, well, we might have missed it because each building is supposed to have a handicap spot. Okay, and it doesn't.
We can take another look at it.
Okay. The other thing is eliminating this this bank of parking in the front.
Lose twenty.
That encourages a lot more people coming on site. Okay. The units themselves would definitely need one parking place in the front for whatever vehicle, company vehicle, whatever. Okay. I don't think you need more than two at the most of park places per unit. But that'd be the most. If you're having shop in there, not manufacturing in there, or or only you know, what you're calling for, the shops, you know, does not go have a lot of employees. You know, and the mom-pop shops or whatever you're talking about. There's not a lot of employees, so I think the number of park places are exaggerated.
We can, we can look at eliminating that parking area if it's the request of the commission. Again, this use, the parking spaces are up to the discretion of the commission. We included what we thought was a reasonable amount to ensure that there would not be too little parking. In our estimation, it would be worse to have too little, and then you'd end up with people potentially parking on the street or areas they weren't supposed to park. However, if the commission does determine that they want to see less parking, that requested parking area in the northeast corner of the site, it would be very easy to eliminate that.
Yeah, I would also ask you to to look at the handicap regulations. It's not our parking requirements, it's ADA that requires a certain amount of park places in the in the in the thing, and with fifty-eight units, I'm wondering how many park places, did one ADA go require one park place for every unit? Or they go replace for two park places for every building? I don't know.
ADA, I can comment on that. ADA governs parking spaces for accessible parking in terms of the total number of spaces on a property. For this, for a property with between one hundred and a hundred and fifty spaces, it would require five. We currently show six. So we exceed the amount of ADA required spaces, and if it would be something that the building official would want to see them in different places, we can certainly shuffle them around. But we do comply with the requirements for number of ADA spaces.
Yeah, but you got, the nearest park place, the handicap park places is in front of four, building two, one, two, and three. Don't have any handicap park, but prepare, that's a long distance for a handicap to go.
Take a look.
You know. And and those are the details that really need to be looked at. You know, the the engineer, your engineers should be looking at that.
The building inspector does.
The building inspector should be looking at that.
Process, he reviews all the plans for compliance with the handicap spaces and and has them adjusted around the site if they're necessary to be adjusted, or perhaps they, if the, an occupant of a particular building, you know, the landlord would come in and say, you know, I need, I have a tenant for building, whatever, I can't see the handicap spaces from here, but one of the buildings that that units that the handicap space is not adjacent to, but maybe they need a ramp sidewalk and a handicap space is adjacent to that. He he works with them to adjust the parking within the parking layout that exists. We would not allow a change to the impervious surface and or or expansion of parking, but it may, or or an adjustment to the number of parking spaces below what was required by the commission. But we would make that adjustments during the permitting process for the individual circumstance if that came up, or if he found it not compliant with the code regulations.
I do understand what you're saying. I really do. My problem with plans like this, when they don't show what the building inspectors go require or or some things that aren't on the plan. Okay, they don't get done. Okay. The builders go do the easiest way out. I would if I was the builder.
Tim, just, I'm sorry. I did see there were some additional handicap parking. Addressing your concern, I think it was over by building six. There's two. And then there's the two that you noted at building four. And then there's two that's on the map for near building two. So I mean, I just.
To be spread out.
Well.
You know, but.
Well, just so you know, that four wasn't the other one. Defense of that, but.
No, I I just need to, you know, let their their looking at that item.
Might I?
Yeah.
I might suggest that be added as a condition of approval that the building inspector review and.
Oh, yeah.
Parking layout. And actually, I wrote it already to the as modified as necessary by the the building official and the town planner.
Okay.
So I had a couple of comments.
All righty. Go ahead, Mr. Rogan.
One, I just wanted to clarify for everybody. The question was, is this architectural design going to apply to all the buildings on site?
Correct. That's the intent, as well as the maintenance building will be not obviously the same in terms of all the garage doors, but the architectural stick frame, wood siding. The intent is to build all to the same architectural standard.
Thank you. And then the other thought I had real quick when I was looking at it, it seems like it's the will of everybody that there be no entrance coming down off Norton. But I thought before we made that decision that maybe one other option might be if you did a one-way entrance that was curved so that people coming from Kensington Road down towards Norton could take a right-hand entrance only into the complex. That way, they're not driving all the way down to the stop sign, waiting at the stop sign, causing traffic to take a right to go up to the entrance. And
That would.
That would limit emergency access coming from one direction also.
True. No, those are my two comments.
I want to go back to the, I want to visit the architecturals very quickly. The garage doors themselves, are they metal or what are they? Because the the rendering shows, it looks like it might be metal with glass windows. Oh. I know. Yeah, sorry. Take your time. Well.
Yes, the intent would be metal with glass windows.
Okay, and the opening next to that, that's a door. Pedestrian access. Have you thought about putting any, I mean, on one of the, one of the drawings, you have awnings with windows. And then it seems like where you go into the building, it's it's that, that's the side that you would open the building up and go in. Is that correct?
This would be the intended access.
Okay, don't you think we ought to pretty it up a little bit?
You'd put awnings.
Okay, well, not so much, well, awnings, but I was thinking maybe you could do some sort of window feature. Even with like a thick block glass, so it's, so the light would be able to come in, but people wouldn't be able to see what was in the building. Like a block, a security block, it diffuses.
Where would you propose to put that?
Oh, I would say put it between the. Oh, I would say put it between the garage door, uh, the adjacent garage door, and uh, the door where the person goes into.
So unfortunately, that would be, um, that's going to be where the partition walls would be built for subdivisions. If you look at the facade.
Okay.
In between the man door and the garage door is going to be where the intended partition walls would be, which would preclude it. Um, again, we do have windows shown in the garage doors and windows along the sites. We could look at putting windows along the back of the building to allow lighting from that direction.
Yeah.
From the front, just based on the intent subdivision of the building.
So this is the front of the building, this is what it looks like.
So this would be the front.
So the side looks better than the front. I mean, you've got like this, like fancy wood on top where the A-line is, the nice little awnings and.
No, understood. At the end of the day, these are still utilitarian buildings.
Yeah.
So the main intention of the front still always will have to be access for vehicles, access for.
But, but you have to understand my intent. At the end of the day, my intent is to make a nice-looking project for the town, and something that you could be proud of.
Of course, um, and that's, we came back with these plans. We think they are, you know, beautiful buildings, they would certainly exceed ninety-nine percent of industrial buildings in town. Um, if there are any further suggestions by the commission, we can certainly look at them, but um, the windows in the front in the area you suggested would not be feasible.
Okay, alright, so let's look at the lighting then. Is the lighting with, um, are you going to have any gooseneck lighting on the building perhaps over the entranceway? So if somebody in the wintertime, when it's dark out at four-thirty, is running late and has to stop off and, and drop some material off before going home for the holidays, is the, is the door entrance lit somehow, and what would that look like? Oh, I'm not talking about the spillage. What I'm saying is there are going to be any light fixtures on the building? That will help somebody, give them a sense of security as they're fumbling for their keys and stuff.
So those are shown on the lighting plan.
Okay.
Above, there are three lights shown for each building, which could be switched on or motion activated um, for the exact purpose to provide people maybe there, um, you know, in the winter after sunset. Um, they're denoted by the, the arc of the L.
Oh, okay, alright.
Do show um, three lights mounted along this front of each building.
Alright.
For that exact purpose.
Okay. Yep, yep. I'm sorry. Well, yeah. Uh, Commissioner uh, Millard had said that she'd like to see what the lighting actually looks like on the rendering. As opposed to just showing me a picture of the D-series.
It, it would be, if we drew it to scale in the building, it would, it would hardly be visible.
Yeah.
Small fixtures um, about, I think the dimensions are on there.
They like, they look very futuristic, don't they?
They are.
Yeah.
Uh, the high-efficiency LED drum set lights.
They don't, they don't make any kind of antiquated futuristic-looking things?
No.
Oh, yeah, you have to look.
Certainly look at.
Yeah.
Picture for one with similar um, lumin.
Yeah. To Mr. Zigmont's point, because we had talked about the parking in the front, um, I think that if we do go, if the commission goes the way of eliminating that, I think that that should be a dedicated huge landscaping space, even if it's bermed or whatever. If, if those uh, spaces are eliminated.
If I could interject, my request to not do that, um, we could plant it with grass. However, I again, going back to having too much parking versus not enough parking, what I would hate to happen with this property, and the reason why we designed it with maybe slightly more than might be necessary, is sure some contractors are going to have one or two employees, but some might have four or five. And we can't guarantee that not everyone is not going to have two or three employees. And the thing we would hate to have happen is for us to build it and eliminate those twenty-eight parking spaces or whatever it is, and then have a bunch of landscaping installed there that would end up to be demolished to expand.
So do, so, so do you see these buildings as being used as offices?
The main intention is no, not for offices. Maybe one person would stay to do the books or do fabrication. Most people would come, you know, you'd have a couple of employees come um, park their cars, drop the trucks for the day, load up the trucks for the day, and then go out to the job site, and then go back at the end of the day, um, unload the trucks and go home.
Okay, alrighty.
So, we can certainly, if it's, if it's the commission's desire to truly eliminate parking, we can eliminate that, um, that parking area, but I would request that it be left open for potential future expansion to the parking lot, just in case the, the needs of the property dictate that.
Hmm, okay. Uh, Diane?
So, um, I'm inclined to agree with um, the recommended parking. Um, that your plan for the recommended parking, the two and a half to three spaces, um, because I agree that there would be a concern to have too little, um, and that it would be a, a bigger issue with people parking on the street. I'm wondering though, if um, it might help to soften the um, visual effect um, by shifting, swapping that parking lot and building seven. So the building seven is closer to four rod, and the short side of the parking lot is facing the street rather than the long side.
I, I think that would have the opposite intended effect, if I'm being honest. We, we heard early on in the process that neighbors along four rod wanted the buildings as far away from the street as possible. So with the exception of the small maintenance building, which the intention would not be for significant daily traffic, um, we've kept all the buildings as far away from four rod as possible.
Okay.
Um, as well as kept all of the loading base facing away from four rod. With the cars, people would park their car in the morning and then not go back to it till the end of the day, whereas the building, you could have people there throughout the course. So, to us, the cars would be a quieter neighbor than buildings, you know, in terms of what's closer to the street.
Hmm, okay. And Brian, and then I'm going to go back to the public to see if they have any comments, because we are still in public hearing.
Just to dovetail on that topic, um, then maybe one ulterior thing you could do is in between the parking lot and building seven, just add a little bit more um, landscaping to break it up.
Yeah, we could add some trucks there.
Okay, is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission? She seems to be the, okay. Alright.
Rhonda Romus again, um, I just wanted to say that I thought that um, Commissioner Jorsy had a great idea, and I'm just going to say, those other buildings that were closer to us were metal buildings. And if they flip-flopped the parking and put that building closer to us, the back of the building, it would work. We, I wouldn't have a problem with that. I, I don't like a parking lot in my front yard. The back of a building, not as bad. And I think there should be tall trees, there still should be taller trees. We have two, they're only putting in two red um, maples. I think we need uh, the abreviades or something to, you know, that will grow fast and be tall. Um, but I think that's a way better solution, in my opinion. Having the parking lot closer to us is not as aesthetic as having the back of a building. In my opinion, I don't want to see trucks and people coming and going constantly. So that's just what I think.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
One question I had is, um, I think probably the concern of the applicant of flipping building seven, and the parking lot was now the parking lot would interfere in the use of building seven. And, and no other building has that problem currently.
Our preference would certainly be to leave it the way it is. Um, I, as much as I appreciate Mrs. Romus stating that that is her preference, we did hear, you know, numerous testimony from, from all neighbors up and down the street that they did not want buildings close to Four Rod Road. Um, and our, our professional opinion is for site logistics, it works much better to have building seven the way it is.
Alright.
And, but you're agreeable to adding or boosting some of the landscaping that'll screen that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else from the commission? Nothing from, yes, June.
Um, I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Hamilton's comment about locking down the, the business site. I, I have concerns about that. There may be emergencies depending upon what businesses are located in there to get equipment. Um, like an electrician, for example, if electric goes out or there's storm or something, and they need to help with a sun pump or something, and someone's home in the middle of the night, we don't want to lock them out of their business. So I, I, I think there's other ways to handle keeping the hours were worthy.
Okay, anything else from the commission? Scott Hamel online, do you have any other questions or concerns? We are in the public hearing.
No, I'm not, I, I agree with Zig though, as far as that parking goes. I mean, I'm looking at it now, I mean, is there any way you can cut that parking lot in half? I mean, that's another thought. Do you need all those spaces, or can we just cut it in half?
Okay, terrific, thank you, Scott, and Mr. Sage.
Yeah, Christopher Edge, two forty Kensington Road. I believe the town of Berlin is working through DOT program for connectivity for sidewalks. Look at the other side of the street. Um, one of the plans has been to fill the gaps with sidewalks. I believe that's within the plan, I don't know if the money's in place or not, but I know that's one of the areas we looked at, because with the schools in the area. So I think the other side of the road is being looked at, whether or not we have the money in place, I do not know.
Okay, so you're addressing the side of.
The sidewalk on the other side, yeah, on the other side of the road.
The residency on four rod.
Yeah, the, the idea would be is to have the sidewalks go up the other side. I don't know whether or not, they're currently in the plans, but we've been getting connectivity monies from the state for sidewalks, and so that's something we've been looking at.
And is that, and is that going toward the Berlin Turnpike, or going toward the center of town on four rod?
I, I believe both, at this point. I think they're both, both important at this point.
Well, I, I believe in, again, it kind of as a moving target.
Yeah.
But I believe from Norton Road north on Four Rod Road, we have a sidewalk plan in place um, that may or may not be completely fully funded right now, but we, I believe we have design plans for that sidewalk to be installed going north on Four Rod Road, on the east side of Four Rod Road, going up towards the center of town, you know. On the south side of Four Rod Road, uh, of Norton Road, there's been a section of sidewalk on and off grant applications for putting it also on the east side of the road. Kind of, it connects down um, to Meadow, to where it turns into Meadow Lane, all on the side of the street with the houses on it, so that there's kind of a loop to, um, for connectivity to get children to the schools along Norton Road, and it actually eventually even if you're ambitious, walk all the way to the high school, you know, by going that way um, on the east side of the road, and that is in plans, again, the, the last couple of grants. It came out of one grant application, but it may still be in the other grant application, and that section's all along the east side of Four Rod Road.
And the biggest issue we found is between when we go for the money and we try to do the project, the costs always go up, so we have to modify. But the good news is, they are in the preview of what we're looking at through DOT. So I just want to just, just let you know, it is something that the town is looking at.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so we're in the public hearing, but, but I'm sorry.
It's my turn, I'd love to.
Oh, you want.
Add things.
Are you commenting during the public hearing, or the deliberations?
I comment during the public hearing, because it's testimony.
Okay, go ahead.
Consideration, but I don't want to comment if you're still.
No.
Until it's my turn.
Go ahead, I think it's your turn now.
Okay, um, as far as flipping the building, and again, we're trying to read the screen, which is a little small, but um, the flipping the building to the parking, I'll address that, because it's foremost in my brain right now, is the parking would have a lesser setback than the uh, building would. So it would consider, it would probably considerably change their layout. You can, it looks to me from here, like you can see the dotted line along the back of the parking spaces that are closest to the road is probably the fifty-foot setback line, is that correct? Yeah, so that's, so the building would be there, however, then you might not have an equal amount of space for the parking elsewhere. There are um, two other things related to that parking lot. Um, one, I do think that um, um, at least a very cursory explanation of why the one hundred and forty-seven um, spaces was um, calculated, you know, what's the support, the applicant should support where that number came from, um, as opposed to, you know, it doesn't sound like you have good evidence at this point as to why that number. And there have been situations where you, uh, where the commission has reserved a parking area and said for future installation, should the zoning officer determine that the parking is needed, so that can happen. My, um, one of the recommendations I came up with almost immediately upon hearing the public comments was that any contractor vehicles, trailers, et cetera, um, be required to park adjacent to their shops, and the front lot be limited to the parking of passenger vehicles. Um, I do have a concern at, from the zoning enforcement standpoint, that on White Oak Drive, where we have businesses that do have a lot of employees that come and trade off for work vehicles, they, you know, you may only need one spot for any given hour, but you need two spots to change cars. So you need a place to park your car, to then go get the truck that's parked elsewhere on the site. And on White Oak Drive, we have constant on-street parking and complaints um, because it causes um, congestion, and clearly, there's no, uh, on, on-street parking would be absolutely unmanageable if it's even allowed on this section of Four Rod Road. So I wouldn't want to encourage that situation to occur. Let's see.
Question on that. Uh, would that be our purview, perhaps signs put up that don't allow for parking on the street on that side?
So this is special permit use for contractor shops, so you can put conditions on your approval. And so you can put a condition on, and especially in this case where you're determining the parking for the use, you're determining whether the parking's adequate, so you can say that. Now, I, I, for passenger vehicles, that would of course include, you know, somebody's um, combination plate personal F-three-fifty, you know, it's not just civics. You know, it would be any n- normal, you know, personal vehicle. But yes, you could do that. Address that already, um, you know, you might want to consider um, additional, and I think, I think um, more than one of you mentioned, additional screening around the parking lot may dissuade some of the neighborhood concerns with regard to the parking. I believe they'd be probably the minimum requirements for the amount of screening around it, but you may want to enhance that a bit in order to address that. I would like some clarity with regard to the lighting fixtures, if you were to move forward with the application, just so I understand, you know, if there is a modification that you're looking for with regard to lighting fixtures. Um, and, you know, that might be something that you allow to be under, um, the applicant to work out with staff, but, and it could be added as a condition. Um, that's contractor vehicles, and and make a condition of the approval, if I didn't already say it, that the layout of the parking lot with the handicapped spaces be modified as necessary with the building official and town planner. Think that's all the ones I've added. And then, of course, all the comments I made, I will point out that um, at the beginning of the staff comments, numbers one through four, right at the top, are things that the commission needs to comment on as far as making a determination on each of those items.
Okay.
Move forward.
Alright, one last questions, commissions? Hearing none, we have a motion to.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, were you ready? Oh.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close by Ms. Jorsy, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Zigmont, further discussions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Right, um, all right, look. Okay, the don't take off. Well, the partner, because she went and got a, Berlin Turnpike, MBL, 21-4, 153. He's from the BT, so PI, and then, which is Plan Industrial, then we have.
Is your mic on? I'm sorry, is your mic on? It doesn't sound as loud.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Should I, I don't have to start again, do I? Okay, good, all right, um, then, all right, so the blah, blah, blah. Um, and then the Berlin Turnpike, uh, 2189 Berlin Turnpike, MBL 21-4-153-12, from BT2 to, to Plan Industrial, and Zero Stone Drive, MBL 21-4-153-11A, from the R-15 to the Planned Industrial. All right, that's the one that's in there with the. Okay. Good evening, how you doing today?
Well, how are you?
Uh, sweller. Well, he said he was swell, sweller, I don't know, I just made it up just now, this very moment. Okay. Feel free to use it anytime, okay. Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, for the record, um, my name is Dave Whitney, I'm a professional engineer with an office in Avon, Connecticut. We always had a, we had a chairman for a long time in Avon, who said that your chances of approval are inversely proportional to the length of the presentation. Keep that in mind.
A very wise chair indeed.
So I'm here tonight on behalf of the Ariati Family Limited Partnership, uh, and concerning, uh, three properties on the Berlin Turnpike. You. Can I move this?
Um, I'm gonna see if I maybe have a plan of it, how about that, because it looks like.
This is what was submitted to us?
Yes. So the, uh, Ariati Family Limited Partnership owned two existing buildings in the Spruce Brook, uh, Business Park, which is at the corner of New Park Drive and the Berlin Turnpike. And they purchased three additional lots to the south of one of their buildings, number 24. For purposes of, 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 of expanding the park. The first lot is Lot 13, it's number 2197 Berlin Turnpike. There's a existing vacant house on the property that is scheduled to be raised. Next to that is a second parcel, Lot 12, uh, number 2189 Berlin Turnpike, and it's about one acre. It's an L-shaped lot, goes behind the first lot. And then there's a third parcel, which is, has an address of Zero Stone Drive. Stone Drive is a driveway here to serve an existing house, uh, to the south of these three lots. Uh, this is a landlocked piece of land, and it's 1.78 acres. So the intent is to merge the three lots with, uh, number 24, uh, New Park Drive, uh, which is currently 3.4 acres, so we're gonna wind up with roughly a six-and-a-half acre lot. The, two of the three lots, the two houses that were on the Berlin Turnpike are currently zoned, uh, ET2, which is a commercial zone, and the rear lot, Zero Stone Drive, is zoned, currently zoned, um, R-15. The, the motivation driving this, uh, the, the primary tenant in, uh, 24, uh, New Park Drive is Northern Pipeline Construction Company. It's a company that installs underground gas lines. Its, uh, biggest customer is EverSource, um, and their business is, is booming. And, um, they're, they've outgrown their, the, the parking lot at 24 New Park Drive. So the intention here is to, uh, merge these three lots. Because they're in two different, three different zones, the, the, the two existing buildings are in the Planned Industrial Zone, so the intention is to change the zone of the three lots to Planned Industrial, um, and merge it with the, the existing building. Uh, essentially, they would be extending the Planned Industrial Zone 180 feet south. Without, and then, then constructing a parking lot, which will be a different site plan application, but constructing a parking lot on the front portion of the three lots. Without the ability to add an additional parking lot, that the tenant is going to leave, uh, because they, they simply don't have the space for their, their vehicles and their equipment. We've received a letter of support from the Economic Development Director, in terms of staff comments for this change, uh, for this zone change, um, really no comments. The Conservation Commission did point out that the rear portion of the, of the three lots, uh, may not be conducted to development without significant work, and I would agree. I, I don't know how much you want to get into discussing the topography of the lot, but the rear portion here of Zero Stone Drive, there's about, uh, quarter acre of wetlands. And then there is a very steep knoll, uh, as much as 30 feet in elevation difference from the wetlands up to the high point, and then down towards the Berlin Turnpike. So the, the rear portion of this, of this lot is, is, is a challenge for development, and there is no proposal at this point in time to do anything on that portion of the property. So basically, the new parking lot, which would be about one and a half acres, would be two lots that are currently zoned ET2, but, um, again, merging with the existing property that is Planned Industrial. With that being said, I, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, because I'll go to the public. Yep, let's go to the public. All right, uh, anyone who wishes to address the commission, now would be the time to speak either for or against this application. Please use the microphone and also state your name and address for the record.
92 years.
Ah, you're doing just great.
You walked, you're doing good.
You're doing very good.
I'm in favor of more handicap spots.
Awful, okay.
My name is Lorenzo Jeremiah, and my wife, Jerry, and I live at 2211 Berlin Turnpike. Been there since 1980, when it was a residential area. Since then, things have changed. The two houses next door, as you heard from this gentleman, one of them is already gone, and the other one is waiting to be demolished. There's a, a mountain of millings, I guess, for the parking lot now, that I understand. Uh, it has to be a thousand yards that they've accumulated on one of the properties. And, uh, I represent the remaining landowners that are residential from 2211 Berlin Turnpike up to the Best Western Hotel. And I can see where eventually, it's probably gonna be industrial park, which I'm sure the town is in favor of financially. But meanwhile, we all object to zoning, want that to go on record. Second of all, uh, well, second of all of us, oh, as far as a barrier is concerned, we would like an arrobed body barrier, five foot in height, along the north side of Stone Drive. And on the north, uh, south side of Stone Drive, we would also like to have a six-foot-high laminated fence of our choice before construction begins. Because, would you like to have an industrial, right now, he's saying it's a parking lot. In the future, it can be an industrial building. Would you like to have a big industrial building within 20 feet of your residence? Any questions?
No, sir. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission regarding this application, now would be the time to speak? Would you like to come up and address the commission? Yeah, fine. Just speak, speak from your heart, speak your mind.
My name is Kathleen Paps, and Malcolm Paps is my husband, and he was born in, in that area, and almost, he'll be 88 this year, so right now it's 87 years he's lived in the same area. We've seen the condos go up, and our house burn to the ground, and they never found out who did it. We had to be, uh, I lived with my mom for a couple of years, and finally, we had to rebuild the house. And it's sad that they're ruining that beautiful mountain. Where are the little critters gonna go? Where are the deer gonna go? Where are the poor little animals gonna go? And where are the people are gonna live? We pay a lot of money for taxes living there, and I'm so sad to see. I know we have to do industrial, but you have a whole bunch of industrial in the town of Berlin, where you have a problem with the traffic, and the Berlin Turnpike is really bad. You're gonna have to drop that speed limit, or you're gonna have a lot of accidents. And I'm so sad to hear that they're gonna build and build and build and ruin the beautiful landscape. We have to save something in Connecticut, we have to. Thank you for listening, appreciate it.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Hello?
Hi, how are you doing?
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Uh, my name is Chad Drinkwater, I recently purchased the house seven years ago, 33 Overhill Road. I purchased it because it was in the woods, close to everything, and it's been changing really fast. Uh, lots of construction going on, uh, they built that self-storage unit across the road, there's still construction debris on my road. I call the town all the time, we will come take it. My road's falling apart, there's a mountain of millings that these people were dropping off all hours of the night, with a generator running, with the lights on, with an older Clark equipment banging and smashing all night. They did not set this up very nice for future development. Really, not good at this, but I would just like you to.
No, you're fine.
Consider what you're going to be inviting into this area. I think new homes should be developed here, not industrial.
Very good, thank you. Okay, anyone else who wishes to address the commission, now would be the time? All right, hearing none from the public, I'm gonna go turn back to the commissioners. Uh, do we have any questions at this time regarding the application for the applicant?
I make a quick correction to my staff report.
You should.
Indicated Stone Drive was private, Stone Drive and Overhill both appear to be, um, public roads.
Okay.
I think they're non, non-conforming public roads, but.
Okay.
Opposed to held in private ownership.
All righty.
Maureen, I took a ride there today, and it says private.
It's private.
Oh, it does, okay.
It's a private.
It says the map, and so.
Yeah, it's a pri, it's a private road.
That's, that's what I put in my report, and then when I went to the GIS, it makes it look like it's a public, it's not part of their parcel. So I, like, ooh, I was wrong.
All right, while you're in that GIS thing, or GSI, or whatever you call it, how many, if, if this application were to go in the applicant's favor, how many homes would be left in that residential zone? That you see there?
Or one vacant lot.
And in the four, that's not in.
Besides his property.
That's, yeah, that's besides the applicant's property.
All south of Stone Drive. Can you bring up the GIS?
Because the first two properties are already in the BT zone, they're just switching over to the Planned Industrial. But they have the lot, the lot that's landlocked in the back is the R-15. And that's the one that's being proposed to move over to the Planned Industrial as well. I, I think the question for the commission here is that, how are we gonna protect the residential, the people who have lived in their homes all their lives, I certainly don't wanna, um.
I also have a concern with the, um, existing dri, oh, that's.
Is it on?
It's on. I also have a concern with the existing driveway encroachment, um. It's been like that for, what, is it close to 80 years? I'm worried, no, if you look at it.
Oh, the Stone Drive?
The Stone Driveway, the, um, private road, it encroaches on one of the parcels, so I'd be concerned with that, because we don't want to, um, cut off access to this house and landlock it. So keep it existing.
Well, let me ask you a question then. With the, the house that's already, or is, is set to be demolished, I guess that's going to be on Lot 12? Well, no, Lot 12 is already, is already vacant.
That's correct.
So, are you're building a driveway up now? You're, you're, you're cleared and you're laying millings or stone or something going up to the back, right?
There is a, uh, large pile of buildings on the front portion of Lot 12. Depending on where the house used to be.
Is, is that where you're intending to access for the additional parking?
Would you like to see the site plan of the.
Well, actually, I can't, I can't really see the site plan, because we're, we're just basically here for the zone change, so.
Yes, to answer your question, there's gonna be a proposed driveway, if that's your question, where the buildings are, right here.
Okay.
And, and, and really, the, the back portion of this property, this is wetlands, this is wetlands buffer, this is the steep knoll. So really, okay, from a practical point of view, it's just gonna be the front portion of the site that's currently B2, B, B2, that, uh, will be developed as a proposed parking lot.
Then my, that begs the question, why bother with Lot 11A then?
Well, they, they own the property, we're going to use part of it. Part of it probably here, the westernmost portion will, will be an access drive. This is the existing parking lot behind 24.
Yep.
There will be a driveway coming here too, to access the parking lot. So, a, a, a small portion of the rear lot will be developed. So they're gonna merge these properties, uh, in my mind, we, we don't have different zones in one lot.
No, I, I understand, but right now, they haven't, they haven't been merged yet, so that's, that's why I'm asking the question. Uh, Mr. Rogan.
Maureen, could you refresh my memory as far as the PI zone goes with, uh, setbacks from residential? And, um, what our regulations state to screening?
So, um, PI zone, the side yard when a budding residential district is 50 feet, does have a, a footnote, so I'll read that afterwards. Rear yard when a just, um, a budding residential is 50. Uh, parking and loading for the side yard when a budding residential is 50. And-
So would that be-
And Lot, the-
Parking lot couldn't be-
Yeah, it's just to the perimeter of the total site, so it would be where it's at.
So I'm having a little difficult, so that would be, the parking lot would not be able to be created within 50 feet of the property line, which looks like that's where Stone Drive is?
Yes.
Okay. And what do our regulations say for screening? Because we do have, we do require screening, I believe.
I think that's, you know, landscape buffering is required, but that's the intensity, I believe, is the discretion.
So-
But I-
When they came in for a site-
This is on this, yeah.
When they came in for a site plan, we can make sure that the residentials are well screened?
Yeah.
That'd be in our purview?
Well, it is a site plan.
Yeah.
So they have to meet the regulation regard to it as opposed to it being a special permit use-
Yeah.
You would have further discretion to-
Yeah.
Enhance.
Okay.
But you can ask and-
Okay.
And you frequently get cooperation, but I won't say that, you know, that's-
Okay.
An applicant's purview.
All right. All right, any other questions regarding the zone change?
Yes.
Yeah, Tim?
Knowing that Stone Drive is a private drive, it's not a town road.
That's where the-
I know it is. And, uh, the-
Goes all the way to this house.
Residential property, well, the first residential property, R 15 in the back, you know, and B two in the front. B two P I, it's really not that much of a difference. But, uh, I'm questioning any extra, any driveway going to the Burl Turnpike, which was just mentioned, okay? On this. And any encroachments on the, the street of Stone Drive or the private way of Stone Drive? If that will be addressed by the, the owners now with a cross-use thing or improvement of the Stone Drive onto the, the property of Paps, because there is an encroachment there, that would have to be addressed. If the applicant is, is willing to do that. And knowing this area, as we go down the street, as they said, there's gonna be probably more than, but it is R 15 zone going south of that, except this one B two zone, Lot 14. If we go to P I, on these lots, we're going to have one lot, would it be two? Which, again, to me is a spot zoning, because it's gonna be one lot. So that one lot, I don't know if it should be in the zone change or not.
No, they're all going-
And the R 15 lots all the way down, these are big lots going down there. R 15 is only 15,000 square foot lot. So there is a potential of a large residential development in this R 15 lots going south. So with that potential, we gotta remember that we're putting P I closer to the R 15 potential. And the back lot of Paps is R 15. That's gotta be at least a two-acre lot there, or close to a two-acre lot there. I question, are these lot lines gonna disappear in the P I? So all these lots are gonna be merged together? If they're going to be merged together, those lot lines should be disappear on, on the, the zone change. And what potential does that give the owner of the P I zone? Okay, how much building can they put on there? How much construction that they're talking about putting a driveway to the Burl Turnpike can be put on these three lots as P I? How many square footage of building can be put on there? That's against Jill, a zoning of R 15. Those are my, my questions. You know, on the, on the zone change. First of all, that the lot lines have to disappear totally. And what's the potential of building on the, on the whole piece together with the lot, lots? Because there's a lot of parking lot back here that I see right now, three existing parking areas right now. So is parking lot going, going to this where this P I is gonna be changed? Or, and, and this be-
He's talking of site-
Well, where the parking lots are here? I mean, you know, it's, it's a lot of questions on it because I can't see the site plan, I don't wanna see the site plan.
I have a question for our attorney, actually. If we were to grant this zone change as part of the condition of the zone change, could we ask for more purview over this changed area when it comes to the site plan for things like screening and dealing with the encroachment?
As, I've been your counsel for a long time and as I've often told you, you could ask for whatever you want to ask for and they'll respond. And they may be agreeable. And I saw Mr. Zigma as you were speaking, I saw Mr. Whitney's head nodding in agreement-
It got inside my eye.
Several times, so he understands what, what the concerns are. So I don't know if he wants to make any comments.
Can I make a few comments right now?
By all means.
First of all, vegetated buffer and a fence are not unreasonable requests at all. I'm gonna go back to my clients and, as we're working on the site plan now. We did meet with the D O T out at the site about a week and a half ago. There are two existing driveways for the two, two houses currently on the Berlin Turnpike. Those two driveways will become one, one new driveway. Sightlines are fine, we discussed the drainage, I probably don't wanna get into all that now, but it, it appears very feasible to have a new driveway that I was mentioning. So we've, we're working with the D O T on that.
Okay.
As far as the lot lines disappearing, a, a new map will be filed where these three lots will be merged with 24 New Park Drive. But I think I had to show them now so you understand-
Yes.
What we're trying to do.
Okay.
As far as what the development potential is for an R 15 residential development, to be honest, this is not prime land for a residential development. Rear of the property, the rear, almost half of the lot, not quite half, as I mentioned, has a very steep knoll in the back and wetlands. And in addition, there's always this concern about residential houses abutting an industrial zone. So it's, it's not the applicant's intention to develop this as, as a, as a residential project, ever. Their desire is to keep their tenant in Berlin. So without the ability to expand the parking lot, the tenant will leave. And again, we're proposing to extend the planned industrial zone to 180 feet. So it's, it's not, it's not a large expansion. And I certainly understand the concern of the neighbors and, and again, fences and arborvitaries and buffering is a very reasonable request and, and often done. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
Alrighty.
So I have one more concern and this is a gentleman who spoke earlier. One of my things is, I'm a man who loves his sleep. So I do have some concern over late night construction with equipment moving the millings around, the bright lights. I don't know, is that an enforcement issue or?
It's really a P D issue and it has to do with the, the noise ordinance. However, some of the millings that have been appearing throughout town recently are the result of D O T highway work in the middle of the night. So they need to move them at the time they move them. And how much authority the town has over that has been a subject of discussion.
Okay.
Because D O T has some, or rather, the state, if their project has some powers that supersede the others prohibiting their work of accomplished during the night hours.
Okay.
I was not aware of the issue until tonight of this, this midnight construction activity.
I don't know when these millings were coming in, is that what was testified, that these were coming in at night?
I guess-
Because this is not an area I, that our office, as far as I know, got a complaint on. But again, we refer those complaints to P D, we're not here in the middle of the night and you gotta catch people.
Yeah.
So the P D handles that kind of enforcement.
Well, certainly, going forward, the applicant can control when he does the construction activities on this property. It would certainly not be unreasonable to restrict the hours of operation to normal, normal hours.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Certainly, the construction that's related to building permits on a property or the town approval of improving the property would be subject to the noise ordinance that has hours of operation for instruction within it.
All right, okay, that's it? Diane?
I'll make a motion?
Oh, sure. Uh, yeah, you're just getting, yes, you're just getting it under the wire.
Can you, can you move over to the microphone? I'm sorry with the recording.
Pointing at the driveway that's on the Berlin Turnpike, I don't think that should be allowed at all. It's an extremely bad traffic area, it's downhill, trucks on the jake brakes, screeching tires. The self, like I've said, self-storage, or since the self-storage was built, there's been people locking up their brakes and turning in there in the morning because I'm going to work. So anything happens at all should only be coming from the industrial road.
Okay.
I pull people out of cars, that's the guard rail. But it's not a safety, um, 18 wheelers come down there and somebody has to slow down their work vehicle so they don't tip over their buckets in the back, go into this driveway, there's gonna be a bad, bad accident.
Okay, a good concern, thank you.
Madam Chair, to the first gentleman that spoke, the first member of the public, he did approach me with photographs that he, he wanted to present to the commission.
Okay.
These are pictures of residences. Talking about the traffic situation, as I said, I've lived there for 45 years. We have had people crash right in front of our house. We had a person get killed at a turnaround a couple of years back. It's very dangerous. When I pull out, in fact, we had to hire people to cut down the bamboo growth along the highway because the state didn't do it, just so I'd have further visibility because people come down there, speed limit's 50 miles an hour. And some of them, I had an officer tell me he clocked somebody over 100 miles an hour coming down that hill. How much time do I have to follow my driveway?
No one needs to go that fast.
They do.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for your time.
No, thank you. Okay. And then you wanted to make a quick comment, Maureen?
Yeah, so, um-
Oh, okay.
We need them for the record.
Actually, we will be keeping, we have to keep them for the record, I'll label them as exhibits for the hearing. I'll label them as exhibits for the hearing and we keep them in our files.
Okay, no problem.
For most residences.
Yes.
So, um, and I'm just trying to respond to a couple of comments, you did get my comments in the, for tonight. The narrow acreage, the narrow nature of the, of the acreage to be rezoned would limit, or I don't wanna say limit, but it would control the ability to produce an R 15 development there. You know, they might need a road.
Yep.
You know, you need frontage for each lot and with Stone Drive not being a road, you can't have frontage on that, so you need frontage along the, the highway or new lots in accordance with the regs, so that's one factor. As stated by the applicant, D O T does have the purview over the access on 515 on the Berlin Turnpike, so that is something, an encroachment permit would be required and they, they would make that final determination with regard to that. And with regard to the spot zoning question, it would not be my interpretation that extending an adjacent zone further would be spot zoning because it's contiguous to the existing zone, so you're expanding a zone. So I don't think that would be the interpretation. The interpretation's subject to challenge, but, and of course, your guidance as well, or your interpretation. I would just note that the P I zone, you can see on the map that's shared on the screen right now, the lot on, I believe it's number 40, New Park Drive, which is those buildings. I don't even, if you go straight up from M R one, the words M R one and you go straight up towards New Park Drive, you know, you see that zone line comes out at an angle towards the corner of this lot or the, of the most rear lot here. And the fronting B T two-zoned properties are currently non-conforming residential properties. I think if it's rezoned, it, I would suggest you make the request of the applicant to abandon the non-conforming use so the homes wouldn't be rebuilt and it would be the other zone. Of course, you may choose not to make that request so that they can rebuild the homes. So that would typically be something we would look for, the non-conforming elements of the, of the properties to be abandoned by the owner.
All right, perfect, thank you. Now, Diane, now please, Diane.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Let me make a quick response, the, thank you. The applicant has no intention of building residential houses on this property ever. So they would be happy to abandon non-conforming use.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good, hit it Diane.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion by Mr. Rossi, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rogan, further discussion, all those in favor? Ah, those opposed, so moved. Okay, last of the public hearings is a text amendment application of Arthur Schaler to add new car, automobile dealership, auto storage lots to the Berlin zoning regulations definitions, six G three B T one, special permit uses.
Madam Chair, reminder, I'm recusing myself from this matter.
Okay, lucky duck, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Mr. Hamel.
I recuse myself from this issue also.
Okay. All right, so we have-
I'm sticking around.
You're sticking around, do we have a, we're still good, we're still good, we still have a quorum, okay. All right, okay, go ahead.
Evening, members of the commission, I'm Attorney Richard Pantora representing Arthur Schaler Jr. and Schaler Subaru with regards to this application.
Okay.
So I'm happy to represent Sir Schaler and Schaler Automotive Group in regards to this. My client, whose name is very well-known, has been in the automotive dealership business and very well-respected member of that business community for as long as I can remember. Right now, my client has a Subaru dealership located at 34- Right now, my client has a Subaru dealership located at thirty-four Frontage Road in Berlin. And he's been requested by Subaru to expand his ability to store more cars on his lot. Unfortunately, where he ha, where he has his dealership, he has no room to expand. What we're proposing is to um, modify the the zone in the BT one so that we can have a new new car dealership automotive storage lot located no more than one mile from the dealership that would allow him to store, say, a hundred and fifty automobiles. There's not a lot of properties that can accommodate that along the Berlin Turnpike. We are primarily looking at properties south of Dunkin' Donuts, below Route nine, and probably before the Middletown Road uh, intersection. Middletown Road intersection is about the extent of one mile from the dealership. There's a couple of properties in there, and I think, as we may recall, Monty Therion's chagrin, uh,
Oh.
That's my trailer.
Yes, yeah, I I do recall.
And there was-
Von.
Gas station building, those properties have pretty much gone unused, I don't know if it's, well, you've got wetlands in the back and then the properties go up to the properties on Wellington Ridge, there's there's wetlands. I think the limit, there's limitations on those properties in terms of what can be used, those are the properties we're really looking at to be able to do this. This would be in the BT one zone, it would be, of course, by special permit. And we're modifying both the um, definitions, so under definitions, we define new car dealership auto storage lots, which would be lots for the storage of inventory of automobiles by a national brand licensed new car dealership located no more than one mile from the primary location of the dealership. Storage of vehicles for repair by the dealership shall be prohibited. So that definition would go into um, section Roman numeral six G, which is the BT one. And number three under special permit uses would be new car automobile dealership auto storage lots. So essentially, my client doesn't wanna have to lose his location, but the manufacturer Subaru is almost mandating that he have the ability to store extra automobiles. I think it has to do with the marketability and the ability to sell more cars, obviously. So he's looking at some of these parcels down along the Berlin Turnpike where he could um, park additional inventory of new cars. I think right now we have probably three new car dealerships in town, we have Subaru, we have Taska Ford and the Accura dealership. I think Taska Ford seems to have plenty of property. The Accura dealership seems to have plenty of property, I don't know what their circumstance is, but my client's property is is constrained and he doesn't have the ability to park any additional cars. Uh, I know this is not site plan application, obviously, but we are approved. We would have a parking area that looks something like this, this is just a general schematic, obviously, it's not a site plan. On the Berlin Turnpike. This would be how it all lays out there, it'd still be a lot of open space between here and what was up on Wellington Ridge, and this is the, those properties, I think this is where the old gas station was. I think there's been a trail of this part.
So, just uh, just out of curiosity, because of the location of the current Subaru dealership, and I know we're talking more site-specific here, there would be no way for them to lease spaces, say, from the movie theater or from Webster Square?
In fact, Mr. Shaler's here and I think he can answer that better than I can, John.
Oh, okay, oh, Mr. Shaler, come on. Oh, it just, it just seems to me that, you know, for you to have your inventory within a mile.
You could convince them to talk to me about that?
Yeah.
I've had, over the last, Derek, what was, what's it been, ten years now? I've probably met with the people who own the movie theater and the person who operates the movie theater no less than five times in the last ten years, and they say no every time.
Cause they got that whole-
Need all the parking is what they say.
They got that whole back.
And-
Oh, oh, wait, 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 okay.
I I said to him, I said, you don't need it, I've been across the street from you for twelve years, they're empty ninety-eight percent of the time, but he won't talk to me about it. I tried to buy the, you remember they subdivided those three?
Yeah.
I tried to buy those, I think uh, Bob Mirandi did a deal with Showcase Cinema, they have a land use restriction on them, you can't display cars on them.
Oh, that's what it is.
I think that that goes back to the original sale, I don't know if that can be removed, but they wouldn't even talk to me. I offered them twice what they were asking for the property back when they were for sale, and they, they would sell it to me.
And Webster Square, the the old chase.
I called those folks and they told me that their zoning requirements don't allow them to give up any of their parking, they have to have it to match up with their retail, they wouldn't talk to me either. That's the Ocean State job lot.
Yeah, but they-
I talked to them multiple times, I I have tried everything, I've been, Derek, way back, we grew up together and I've been, I've looked at so many pieces of property to try to do this, and one thing that Attorney Pintor missed though, what his comments was, this isn't just driven by Subaru, I need to be able to store cars. I wanna double the size of my building, I need more shop space, if anybody in the room has a Subaru and you try to make a service appointment with us, we're, we're cramped, need more space, so I wanna add onto the building, the problem is, soon as I add onto the building, I lose parking. And Subaru, before I can even come to the town to ask for permission for that, I have a contract with the factory, I can't, I can't, if they won't say yes, I can't even ask you if I can add onto my building. So I gotta make them happy first, before I can do anything else, and they said, we're not approving you adding onto your building unless you have more parking. Because what they don't want is me to say, you can't send me more cars, I got nowhere to put them.
Yeah.
They wanna shove the cars at us, so they're off of their books. So, we've been working on this for a long time, I'm doing my best to try to keep the building where it is, I love the location.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a good spot. I don't think, a lot of towns don't want car dealers going buying a big piece of land and building a new building somewhere, I'd rather keep it where it is.
And adjac, and adjacent to the Stick Village, who owns that, Wickland? And he's not going to let you-
Twice would he pay for that, he said, no.
And he won't lease it out to you?
No, no, we've tried, we missed it by a thing. Yeah. N B T, brown truck. Sorry? N B T, a brick transportation. We've looked over there too, we talked to the the food, the dog food people, we've tried everything, man, I mean, if you got an answer.
Well, no, I'm just trying-
I'm running out of time, cause Subaru wants me to add onto my shop, and if I don't-
Maybe you should go on the golden triangle.
Shops.
Over the whole thing up.
And-
Yeah.
I don't wanna do that, we like our, we like our location, we think we're a good resident, we think we're a good corporate citizen. We don't wanna have to move, but, you know, that's, that's what we're up against, so I approached Chris Edge. He's, I've been working with Chris for several years now on this, trying to find a solution, and I said, I really don't wanna move, what, what can you come up with? He met with the mayor, we met with Maureen as well, um, and uh, this property came up. We weren't even looking at it, it was suggested to us from, from Chris's meetings with, with the mayor, it was suggested to us to look at this property.
So, the property that you're looking at is for sale, and so, you would be-
Under deposit.
Under deposit, so you would be, you would be purchasing it?
Yeah, and and this rendering of, this rendering is just general, that's just a general idea, because when we met with the the mayor and Maureen, and I think, was it the Wetlands Commissioner, I think?
Yeah, the, the agent, Wetlands agent, yeah.
The suggestions were made that we make it as pretty as we can make it, so I said, whatever you want it to look like, I'll make it look like, whatever you want it to look like, I, I just need to add onto my building. I can't do it.
Oh, well, that'll be with the site plan, I have other questions about how you're gonna keep everything safe, but that, we're, we're not doing that right now, alls you're doing is a text amendment. Okay, all right.
You have any questions for me?
Uh, I think you answered everything here, anyone um, in the public? Anyone in the public wishes to address the commission?
BT one, that was rezoned to BT one.
It it was rezoned BT one probably a couple of years ago? The gentleman who owns it now bought it?
Yeah, I remember it, same thing.
Um, oh, Hayek, H A Y E K. Yeah, he ended up getting it rezoned, he um, had it on, actually, he had it on the market for big number, I'm sorry, Chris Edge, two forty, kind of the road. I have been working closely with with Art for a number of years now, we've looked at everything humanly possible in the area. Nothing has worked. Um, the good news is, and again, I know it's just a text amendment, but this is gonna be a lot for their employees, so if you want something in red, they don't have it, the employee goes down, gets it, brings a car up. So this is purely a Shaler lot, this is not going to be a car lot, that we're not gonna have public walking on the turnpike. The good news is, what we're talking about too is, this has been a property that's been in disrepair for a long time. Um, this will allow him to probably almost double the size, I believe, of his dealership, um, which I think would be tremendous, which also will bring in new texts. Um, and it is greatest thing ever known, but if you look at the language, neither one of the other dealerships, I think, are ever gonna do anything like this, they don't need to.
Yeah.
John bought a huge property, Taska's a huge property, and this helps to really, I wouldn't even call it solve a problem, it's a situation it is, which is, if we want Art and the family to grow here, they need to have the cars.
Okay.
And and I just, I I think, appreciate this commission's diligence on this, and I know it is very much a one-of-a-kind kind of thing.
Yeah.
Good news is, it's gonna be new cars, and even, we were saying to him, is if we can get the ability to have a nice Subaru logo up there on the turnpike, I think it'd look really nice for the town as well.
Yeah.
Cause you know, that section, you know that section.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, um, I guess for the public, yeah.
There was some comment about whether this would qualify under an accessory use, but accessory uses have to be by our own regulation on the same lot.
Yeah.
Or a contiguous lot by, owned by the same person, so you couldn't have this as a accessory use, it has to be its own use.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public who wishes, anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission regarding this application? Okay, no one? All right.
I think we just have one thought.
Okay, you have a thought, Diane has a thought, and Maureen has a thought.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I do see this could be potentially helpful to the other car dealerships as well, which isn't a bad thing. Um, I do remember when we did our public hearing with Taska Ford with their new um, repair shop, one of his big things is that he doesn't have any visibility from the Berlin Turnpike. So, and that is a big dealership as well, so if he was to um, utilize this text amendment, he might be able to find himself a little parcel where he could station vehicles as well, which I think would be helpful to another Berlin business. So this text amendment could be um, beneficial to multiple companies.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, on the other hand, I don't want cars parked up and down the Berlin Turnpike. And then I I don't want people breaking into those cars, you know, you have a lot of traffic, anyway, Maureen, oh, wait, Diane?
No, no.
Oh, Maureen.
Right, so you didn't get a staff report on this in part because it's a very simple text, and therefore, this stands on its own.
Okay.
I think it's, you know, you're adding the use as a special permit use or requested to, and the definition of what the storage lot would be. Um, I might add, within the special permit use, I might suggest um, adding to the terminology, new car automobiler, automobile dealership auto storage lots secured to the satisfaction of the commission. I think I might go a long way to um, mandate fencing if it makes sense. Um, there are places it might not make sense, you know, but you do, you might recall when um, the Accura dealership in the newest of the dealerships, um, he had to secure the lot, he did, he wanted to secure the lot because of the traffic that, with the commercial uses around it that might come through, but it proved valuable because there were, they ended up having to close off that rear driveway due to certain issues that were happening on the property, um, where Taska doesn't really have to. So, if it's under the discretion of the commission to mandate it, I think that would be a good idea. Um, the comments from the other department, or from the departments, including the zoning enforcement officer, um, you know, they did address his first comment, which is primary versus accessory, it would be the pri, the primary use of the property would be for the vehicle storage, we usually, um, the interpretation of the regs is actually, it might even be in there, is that you need a building, you need a primary use, so this would allow a parking lot as a primary use, but a primary uh, parking lot for a specific pers, purpose. In the regulations, you do address parking lots a couple of places, um, but those are public parking lots. Those are a provision that would allow for, for public parking lots to be, and that's different, I um, or rather, our department determined that to be different than a storage lot. Um, and therefore, in, with that regard, and again, as they stated, um, the use as interpreted would not allow for a motor vehicle license at this property. So the things that a dealership could do, or an auto repair shop, or anybody could do um, under an automobile license, this isn't allowing for the automobile license under this use category. That's, that isn't allow, you know, another use category on the turnpike, but that would not be what this property was for.
Yeah.
Um, and therefore, it wouldn't be a DMV license, so um, so the provisions of section R, which is automobile services, would not be applicable to, to this, which was the question with regard to the number of vehicles stored outside. And he did wanna point out, um, a number of years ago, there was a motor vehicle license um, on the property at the north end of the, of New Britton Road, um, right on, at the Route nine, um, that had a motor vehicle license, it then kinda went by the wayside, but they didn't lose that nonconformity, they came to Z B A and asked for a change of, of nonconforming use to an inventory storage lot, so that's the only place you have a separate inventory storage lot, but they did have an office on site, but not a sales office, they weren't allowed to have customers there at that time, I think since they might have gotten an automobile license again, but, again, that's, um, and that's pretty much the, the only comments we have, other than, you know, you got the handout of comments from the other departments, economic development spoke and provided a letter, the police chief commented, keep the business um, here. Um, and those are my comments with regard to this.
Terrific, thank you. Diane.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motion to close by Ms. Dorsey, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rogan, do we have further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. All right, moving on, and we will get through this. Uh, commission business wishes the bond release reduction, the first request is for the request of Joseph Clopakki for the release of the public improvements bond, for the maintenance bond of one, of twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars being held for two seven three zero Berlin Turnpike, what do we have on this?
So that um, project has been complete for some time and um-
Are we good? Good to go?
Good to release.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to release the bond.
I'll give you that motion.
All right, Ms. Dorsey has a motion, who has a second?
I'll second, oh, quick.
Mr. Sigma?
Hello.
Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. Moving on to the request of J R Kalisham, Kalisham, Connecticut Self-Storage of Berlin LLC for the reduction of the site bond being held for twenty two hundred Berlin Turnpike, and how does that look?
So, all the improvements were found accessible, acceptable, and therefore, it can be reduced to the maintenance amount of eight thousand fifty-five dollars for a minimum of one year from the installation.
So we're gonna bring it down to eight thousand?
Yep.
Five hundred?
Our recommendation.
Thousand fifty-five.
Eight thousand fifty-five.
Uh, move to reduce the bond to eight thousand fifty-five dollars.
Somehow I thought you would. Ms. Dorsey has a motion, who has a second?
I'll second.
Oh, my goodness gracious, daily from behind, okay. Um, and then we have the informal presentation request by Goman York Property Advisors LLC for a concept plan for an age-restricted development at one oh two Meadow Lane. The M B L twenty-one dash two eleven fif, one fifteen three in the PI two zone. Oh my, okay. All right, okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Here's our guy.
All right, good.
Hello, everybody, my name's Steve McClarty, Coastland Enterprises, uh, we're site, we're contractors primarily. Hello, everybody. My name's Steve McClarty, Coastland Enterprises. We're site, we're contractors primarily. And done a lot of industrial land, a lot of industrial development, part of it for 25 years.
Can you talk into the microphone?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
So when this property came available, we thought it would be a perfect fit. My history of doing industrial properties and a nice piece of property on the Berlin Turnpike. So we we found our first challenge when we went to secure the property. One of the landowners had deeded their section, their, their ownership to the land trust, to the Berlin Land Trust. So after finding out what the land trust goals are, ended up agreeing about 19 acres would go to the land trust out of the 59 acres. So it was a good, good agreement and we're okay with it. So we lost about four acres of Upland forested land and the rest of it was primarily weapons. Right after we obtained the property, we were approached by a bus company to put in an office building, bus parking, a pair shop and a bus wash. So we went about working on a site plan. I've worked with Jim Cassidy for a number of years and always respected his plans. So we reached out to Jim and Jim drew us a concept plan. And not, no fault to Jim, but the plan failed horribly. Wasn't, we found we had a lot of issues trying to do that. So then we redesigned it with smaller buildings and different footprints to try to put this together and it, and it didn't really work too well. So after that effort, it became kind of a thing like, what are we going to do with this spot? What can it be? So I asked around for the best land use consultant I could find. I went to municipalities, I went to developers and Goman New York's name came up quite a bit. They're here tonight to talk about their findings. So after they gave me what their findings were, then we had to go and went back to Dennis to tell him we have a new vision for this property. I showed him what our plans were with the industrial. He was not in favor of that. But he would be in favor of this new vision. So then, but he asked me, he says, can you find landscape architect that will work with the land, treat it softly, and make something really nicer? So I had worked with Phil Doyle of, of L A D A. He did a great job. He's got a wonderful reputation. So we brought on Phil and that's the site plan that you'll see tonight. So I'm going to turn this over to Justin.
Steve? For the record, my name's Justin LaFountain. I'm a certified planner with Goman New York. Our office is based in East Hartford, Connecticut. I know you've had a long night, so I don't want to take too much of your time, but I am going to try to share my screen here for the presentation. We are good.
You have a secret.
It works. Little, little wacky, but we'll make it work. All right, here. All right. There we go. So all of us here are very excited about this project, and I want to go into a little bit of detail about what it is, how it's permitted by your zoning right now. And hopefully we'll come back to you in a few months and present you a full plan for approval. But at this point, the way this is going to go, we'll have me talk followed by Don, also with Goman New York. Then we'll have Jim Cassidy, the engineer, and then we'll have Phil Doyle, the landscape architect. We're going to try to go through this pretty quick for you. Just a quick site overview. We're talking about 102 Meadow Lane here. Bordered on the north by Meadow Lane. On the west, you have residential properties on Tollgate Road. On the east, you have the Berlin Turnpike. There is a small amount of frontage along the Berlin Turnpike. We're going to talk to you a little bit about why it's really not usable at all. It's very steep inclines, and it really is not going to allow for much in terms of access. There's currently no buildings on the property. It's a vacant property. And the main access point that we're going to be talking about, like I mentioned, is from Meadow Lane. Property is currently zoned PI 2, planned industrial. Per the zoning regulations, adult housing shall be permitted in the PR 1, PI 2, and OT 2 zone through a special permit approval from this commission. PI 2 allows for a number of industrial uses, some by right, some by special permit. However, from our findings, both in terms of the market for the site and from the engineering of the site, I think you're going to find that age restricted housing is really the best use of this site. Want to just bring your attention to a couple of points in the Berlin Planet Conservation Development. Berlin needs to expand its housing choice with respect to housing types and housing costs to ensure that housing remains affordable and accessible to its residents, particularly young adults, young families, and older residents. We've been finding that the town and the state of Connecticut as a whole has an aging population and shrinking household sizes. Don's going to talk a little bit more about that, but older residents of Berlin really don't have a lot of choices in terms of downscale, downsizing their homes if they want to move to a smaller type of house. That's also backed up by your P O C D, the aging population and shrinking average household size is creating a situation where the dominance of single family homes in town may force older adults to age in place for longer, which in turn could hinder turnover and availability of the housing stock for younger residents and families. So Goman New York did a little bit of research, market research, to determine what would be good on this site. What's going to be successful? What's going to be beneficial for the town and what's going to be beneficial for the residents? And a lot of our findings pointed directly to age restricted housing. There are 66 multifamily properties within five miles of this site, but only 13 of them are age restricted. When you bump that up to a 10 mile radius, you have 221 properties that are all ages, but only 45 of them, 45 additional are age restricted. Our research continues to show that there is a demand for age restricted housing, and they fill up almost as quickly as they become available and on the market. The 55 to 64 age group in Berlin has seen and is projected to see the largest decrease in population. Because a lot of people are moving out. They don't have a lot of options, so they're leaving the town. And that's going to have a big impact on economic development, you know, the different tax base that can be available for your community. So due to this, we find that due to the need for the housing and the limitations of the site, which we'll talk a little bit about later, we believe that age restricted housing is not only the highest and best use for Meadow Lane, but also the most beneficial and least impactful use for the town and the neighboring residents. Keep things going. Turn it over to Don Poland.
Evening Chair, members of the commission. Nice to see you again. For the record, my name is Hassan. I'm here in myself.
Okay.
Just have to talk real close.
Sure. For the record, my name is Don Poland. I'm with the firm of Goman New York, and as Justin said, we're based in East Hartford, Connecticut. In the interest of the time, I'm going to move through some of my slides a bit quickly. But Jason's already, Justin's already given you an overview of some of the development aspects, but basically I was asked to take a look at this site in the context of how would the residential use fit into the site from a planning perspective? Both interior to the site and with surrounding properties. The design of the site is kind of done in, if you can see here in that small sketch, what I would call romantic suburban style. It's designed into the land. It respects the contours. It respects existing natural constraints and sensitive features. As Justin said, there's steep slopes, there's wetlands, there's also a brook and flood plain. It all has to be taken into consideration. And as we'll see later, or as I will talk to later, ultimately, it's those conditions that limit the capabilities in other areas for this site, other kinds of uses. So you're well aware of where it's located. It's approximately midway between kind of Route 5 or Route 9 and Route 691. As you all know, Berlin is very centrally located within Connecticut already. And then this is a great location, you know, the Route 5 corridor, centrally located, good access to 691 and Route 9. In some ways, you would think that this site, you know, has 50 plus acres of industrial zone lands would have already developed. But it hasn't. And it's when you start looking at the specific site conditions, the steep slope, wetlands, the water course and flood zones, that there's a lot of limitations here. And I believe our engineer will speak more specifically to the frontage on the Berlin Turnpike. So we're not surprised that this hasn't developed as industrial. And when we started doing the market research work, it became kind of more and more evident that this site is challenging in that context. The site's also bound to the north and to the west, and in part to the south by existing residential. So changing landscape of kind of land uses, or what we call in real estate asset classes, is we've seen some disruptions and some changes in recent times. The locations and types of residential that's being built, the locations and types of industry that's being built, the lack of office space that's being built out there based on the overabundance within the marketplace. And shifting demographics, as Justin's already led into. The aging population is creating a different demand on housing than what we had previously. And if you look here, if you look at what's on the right-hand side here, we have a population pyramid. And I know you can't see the details of this, but where you have this kind of bulge in population up high, that's in your 60 to kind of 75-year-old populations. That is the aging baby boomers that are making your population top heavy. Don't feel like that's a bad, that, that's bad or something. It's something that Connecticut as a whole is experiencing. And sometimes in some ways, many, much worse than you. But that means shrinking household sizes, you know, empty nesters with only two people in the household, empty nesters looking for alternatives. In 1960s America, only 13% of households were single person. Today, 29.9% of households in Connecticut are single person. In 1970s America, 40% of households were married couples with children. Today, only 19% of households are married couples with children. So the days of the three-plus bedroom, two and a half bathroom, you know, two-plus car garage, well, that's still the dominant market in the marketplace. The days of that being the predominant desired property has changed because we just don't have the large households anymore. We have more eclectic households of single persons, of two persons, of empty nesters and so forth and so on. Zoning was designed, you know, to do what it does, and you're well aware of that, so I'm going to tread lightly here. But, but if we go back to some of the origins and go back to some of the language in your zoning regs, it was designed to secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers. It worked. You know, there were fears of fire, panic, and other dangers in 1920s industrial cities in America. They're not necessarily what we confront today in most urban places or suburban places. So the role of zoning has ultimately changed. And if we think about age restricted housing in the context of uses, especially done in a townhouse or detached format. My apologies, detached format, not townhouse. It's really no different than a single family subdivision. The only difference is that it's a common interest community. It's a condo. So the parcel is owned in whole, and the individual units are owned, the units are owned individually. As you can see here, it's laid out in a curvy linear fashion. It maintains large swaths of existing vegetation. And also will have extensive new landscaping. One of the biggest issues raised with development today, whether it's commercial, whether it's multifamily, or even if it's single family, is concerns of neighbors related to the impacts of new development on property values. This is an area that's been studied extensively. And there's an abundance of academic research that shows really the only land uses that impact property values are the most noxious. The super fund sites, the airports, the landfills, and so forth. Decades of research on the development of residential adjacent to residential, multifamily residential adjacent to single-family residential continually shows that the introduction of higher density in mixed income development in single-family neighborhoods does not affect the value of surrounding homes. That's a quote from the MIT Center for Research, Real Estate. Other studies have shown the same. Another concern ultimately is typically around fiscal impact. What will be the fiscal burdens of housing in our community? And as we know, there are fiscal burdens associated with it. When you move into the realm of age restricted housing, then you eliminate the student education component of that. So we did a very preliminary analysis of kind of the impacts of what a 90, give or take, unit, age restricted development would have on the community. The first thing I do is I kind of isolate portions of your budget as to what can be attributed to residential development and so forth. So 51% of your budget is the Board of Education. That wouldn't come into play here. We can basically put 51% or $52 million aside. That leaves the town budget. Then we also know that in the context of age restricted housing, there's also often a concern related to impacts on emergency services. You know, if they're older populations, maybe there's more ambulance calls and so forth. So we isolated those portions of the budget. We also isolated the commercial, commercial portion of the grand list to remove it. 17% of your grand list is covered by commercial industrial properties. So this gets us down to kind of what is the share of the budget paid by residential properties? And then what are their share related to emergency services and general government services overall? Table that I have here, I'll just jump to on the next page. Once again, I know it's hard to see at this scale. The most challenging thing for us is the different sized screens in every office we present in. But essentially, there would be zero impact on the Board of Ed budget. Costs per unit would be probably around $4,800 for general town services, and that includes $1,100 per unit for emergency services. So based on the value of the property, estimated value of the property in today's market, development would pay approximately a million dollars a year in taxes. That works out to approximately $12,000 in taxes per unit, just under that. And it would utilize about $5,000 per unit in government services. That means the net profit would be around $7,000 per unit. That works out to about $640,000 per year in net fiscal benefit. We also did a comparative analysis when we were doing the market study of industrial retail, office, and residential. And without having to look at the small numbers, if you just look at the bar chart there that's on the right-hand side, the first use on the left-hand side, the highest bar there is residential tax value, followed by then industrial in the orange, next is retail, next is office. We basically specked out what could be developed on such a site, what the values would be of those asset classes, and then ultimately what their tax value would be. And the highest value, and this is not something new to us, the highest value is always residential. So we believe we have a concept here that fits within your zoning, as Justin made note of, that fits within market trends and also provides meaningful economic development benefits to the community. I'll turn it over to our engineer. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So I take it this would need a zone change?
No. The existing zoning allows for age restricted housing via special permit. In the IP 2, it is a permitted use.
Just as a little bit of clarity, so this parcel has been the subject, at least in all the years I've been here, of a number of ideas, concepts, plans coming in, starting, not coming to fruition, and various other iterations. And so the the applicant And so the, um, the applicant has, um, asked to come in and give you the concept plan for this being, um, get, get some feedback, provide the concept and see if they're, um, ready to move forward with a formal application in the near future or if, you know, or whatever other feedback the town can give.
Okay, okay. All right.
Uh, good evening again for the record. My name is Jim Cassidy with the engineering firm, Halsey Pearson and Cassidy. Um, so I've worked with Steve for several years, um, and I was tasked with initially, how can we develop this as an industrial property? And Steve will tell you, I probably fought it, um, for a while. Um, but then after really getting into it and working with him on it, I understand the vision, I understand the need to take a look at a different use. So I'm just gonna present to you a few slides. Uh, the first slide I have up and just gonna kind of reiterate a little bit about the existing site. As mentioned, it's fifty-six point three one acres outlined in the heavy black line. Uh, it has about, um, nine hundred feet of frontage on Meadow Road, has about four hundred and seventy-three on Berlin Turnpike. Uh, I'm sure everyone knows where it is, but is bounded by, uh, industrial properties along the Berlin Turnpike on the right or to the east, bounded by residents to the west or left, uh, along Tollgate Road and is bounded by, in the south, by also some industrial properties and on the north, the upper portion is Meadow Road. On this plan highlighted in teal, uh, as was mentioned, there's a lot of wetlands areas on the site. In total, there's about thirteen point one acres of wetlands. Majority of that wetlands on the western left side is associated with Belcher Brook, which is running along that westerly boundary line in northly direction until it runs under Meadow Road. In addition to, there's a couple little fingers of wetlands that come off that area. Um, what I like to talk about is it's difficult to see on your screen, but you'll see a little footnotes in red, uh, these are cheats for myself, but I noted in my, my presentation here, the one thing that's very interesting about this property is the topography, uh, as Steve had mentioned. Um, for example, um, if you take a look at Belcher Ro- Brook, that's your lowest grades, the elevations are ranging from about seventy-five to eighty-three. Uh, along Meadow Road, the grades are eighty-nine to about one oh six. Along the Berlin Turnpike, the grades range to one forty-five, uh, to one fifty-five. On the far south end, uh, I have a little footnote on the bottom of that page, there's actually a knoll on this property, uh, and the top of that knoll elevation is two oh two, fifty feet higher than the Berlin Turnpike. You would never know it for looking at it from the Berlin Turnpike. Uh, in addition to, there was reference made to, there's a steep grade coming off the Berlin Turnpike. As you come off, there's actually a twenty-foot drop, which makes it very difficult to bring a roadway in for industrial property without a massive amount of work involved in it. Um, so next thing I'd like to talk to you a little bit is about grades. When you're developing an industrial property, you typically do not want to have steep grades. Uh, you end up with big pad sites, flat areas. Typically, your max grades are gonna be two to four percent somewhere in that area. What I've done on this plan is I've highlighted different grades by range. Everything you see in green is a grade of zero to five percent. Anything in yellow is a five to ten percent. Orange is, uh, ten to fifteen percent and everything in purple is over fifteen percent. So you can see there's a very large portion of this property that's in set, in excess of fifteen percent. The grades we would typically work with when industrial site would be in the, the green and the yellow area, um, but most of those flat grades are actually occupied by wetlands, so it makes the site very difficult to develop. Just a quick example, fifty thousand square foot industrial building, just to give you an idea, by the time you're diving grading, you'd have flat areas overall in the entire building. You end up with a good pad of about two to four, three acres for a fifty thousand square foot building, which has to be flat and we don't have it on this site. As was mentioned, um, you know, I was initially hired to go through and see what we can do with this property and believe me, we went through the effort to see what we can do with this property as an industrial, uh, complex. This is, uh, one of the first concepts we did. I'm not gonna go through every building, but on this plan, we were looking at bringing in a roadway off of the Berlin Turnpike down that slope. Again, I can't go much more than five percent grade on the road, so I had to chase that road pretty far into the site before I even get down near the existing grade. Uh, and then the, you know, first building you see up towards the top portion of the page is significantly below the Berlin Turnpike. Plus, uh, we're looking at possibly having two industrial buildings along Meadow Road, uh, which as was previously mentioned, that's more of a residential area, but it is a zoned industrial. Uh, I'm not gonna go through every building, but just to give you a couple ideas of, you know, what happens if I took a look at the upper building, when we go in a clockwise direction, starting at the upper one, calling a building number one. Uh, as I mentioned, it's, it's way down from the road, you're probably about thirty feet below the road in elevation. Uh, in addition to, uh, ultimately for the driveway you see coming in, there's a significant amount of fill and grade to make that driveway work. Plus ultimately, the state's probably gonna want us to make a deceleration lane to get into there. Uh, and there's this, again, a twenty-foot drop off the slope along the whole side, so a lot of impacts, uh, just to create that driveway. Um, I'm not gonna, uh, we're not gonna talk about the second one going clockwise, but the third one's the bottom right-hand corner, that's where that knoll is. Um, based upon the grades we figured, uh, in that area to make the roadway work and that building work, there's a fifty-two-foot cut to be able to accommodate it. Next building over, on the other side of it, to the left, there's a thirty-foot fill. And if I continue in a clockwise direction, the smaller building, like being twenty-five thousand square feet, you can actually see I have a portion of the wetlands going through the parklot, so I have a pretty significant direct impact to the wetlands to create that. And that's all I really have for about usable land after a lot of manipulation to make it work. On the far left-hand side, those two buildings, so they look great on paper, um, but if you actually look at the grading associated with them, to make the grades work off of Meadow Road, the one, one on the top, um, there's about a twenty-foot cut adjacent to the wetlands. So you would actually be twenty feet below the wetlands and ultimately probably draining and impacting that wetlands also. Um, as Steve had mentioned, um, we seriously entertained a prospective tenant that was looking at building a, a bus terminal, uh, a storage facility and also their office in this location. And this is actually the first site plan that, one of the site plans, just to say that we laid out for them. On this particular plan, uh, up on the top near the Berlin Turnpike, we're looking at building a two-story office building. Similar to the other plan, we have a driveway coming off the Berlin Turnpike, but again, it has to go down at above a five percent grade, not more than five percent, because you're bringing buses up it. Uh, and then ultimately a driveway off it into the office building and then continuing to the back where on paper it looked like great, we can get these storage areas in for buses and then the far back, we can get a maintenance building in, um, and we can get everything they need until, um, we start, um, putting grades on it. On this plan, I went as far as doing all the grading, uh, to get them four percent grades in all their parking areas and four to great percent grades on their access. Um, so it looks like it works on the, on the grading plan, but ultimately what I did is we actually did a cut and fill analysis based upon that plan. Um, and what you see on this plan is when we ran the analysis, we ended up a hundred and thirty-six thousand cubic yards cut. Uh, we needed fills of two hundred and thirty-nine, so it gave us a net fill required of a hundred and two thousand five hundred cubic yards. And to put that into perspective, that's nine, or sixty-three hundred triaxial loads of material we had to bring into the site to make it work. So with that, they convinced me that there's a better loop use and option for this property. So with that, I can turn it over to Phil Doyle.
Yeah. I feel like I'm sitting through a site plan thing. All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Phil Doyle. Uh, I'm a landscape architect and an urban planner. My company's LADA, we're out of Simsbury. And everything you've heard tonight, kind of put it in, in perspective, uh, is not random. Everything that has been, been said. Someone who crafted the, uh, Berlin zoning regulations were, were, they were thoughtful in how they put together the regs, uh, into, uh, one of the questions that a commission member asked was, does this need a zone change? And the answer is no, because, because quite some time ago, it was written into the reg that in this zone and in at least two other zones, uh, the, uh, active adult housing is, is permitted. And if you, when you have the time, take a look at around page two hundred, I think in the, the, my printed copy of the regs, it's about two hundred and three. It goes through, everything's required for making a proposal like this. So there's a reason why, uh, Don, uh, and, and, uh, Jim were explaining, uh, how we've analyzed this for a, uh, a normal, uh, PI two, uh, development. And there, there is a provision that says you guys can grant a, a special permit approval and a site plan approval if it makes sense to the, to the town of Berlin. So, so you are in that, that, that position. And our analysis as a group has been, there's a reason why the property has not been developed for industrial purpose by this point, but, uh, and perhaps because of the authors of the zoning regulations saw this in some particular pieces of property, they, they, they allowed an application such as this to be, to be made. And, uh, it's been mentioned that our major frontage is not the Berlin Turnpike. We have fifty-six acres of land, but only about four hundred feet of frontage on Berlin Turnpike. And when you're on Berlin Turnpike, the, the site itself is fifteen to eighteen feet immediately below you. It's a cliff, try to get in. So it, and that's what Jim was explaining, trying to chase grades. And all of the development over time, uh, along this section of Meadow Road has, has evolved into, into housing. So it's, uh, it, it's an interesting, uh, piece of property. And when, uh, when Steve first brought the idea of the development of this for a, um, uh, housing, uh, project, he explained some of the context and he said, and I think he mentioned to you, that the, in the transaction and the development of this as a parcel, about a third of the, of the land is controlled by the, uh, by the Berlin Land Trust. So you have to be sensitive about how you are developing such a piece of property. And, um, what we've done, what we've tried to do at Steve's direction was to develop a piece of, of the property in a way that we were following the, the, the usable old farming fields, because this was a farm, it was like open space, probably most of you remember. But I went back through the, to the nineteen thirty-four historic air photos that Yukon has. And you can look at the thirties, the forties, the fifties, the sixties, the seventies and see what this property was. And until the nineties, the, uh, the site was opened, it was a farm of one type or another that had orchards and fields. Uh, the wetlands were actually, uh, drained, uh, for, for use. And, but it's been revegetating. So, uh, our goal was to try to develop the property using the old fields and, uh, the road actually follows relatively closely to the farmer's old road location. We've tried to respect the topography, tried to use a curve and tangent type of road layout so that it would feel that when you're driving through, you're not seeing the entire development all at once. You're, you're curving through the property and you have, you have limited views. Along the bottom of the site, the bottom of that sheet, you have Belcher Brook, there's a, there's a wetland, uh, in there. To the right, when you're looking at that plan, there is a, uh, green space. That is a small drumlin type, type hill that as Jim indicated is actually higher than, uh, than the Berlin, Berlin Turnpike. So we've tried to let the development flow through the, through the site. In the core of the site, we are looking to develop a, a rather large community area. The other thing I'd mention in, in mentioning the community area, when you have a chance to look at the regulations, you will see that the layout of, of the, the buildings, the, the, the roads is not random and that you have a very specific regulation that says the driveways will be twenty-four feet. There will be sidewalks on those, on the driveways. The units will be set back a certain distance from, from the roads. There's a density, uh, established of two point five units per acre maximum. And in this case, uh, case, in theory, one could develop about two hundred, excuse me, a hundred and forty units on the property at two point five. We're thinking when we make this application, that we would be in the range of ninety units. We would be substantially less than what the maximum is and we'd be looking to develop this as smaller, single-family homes for the active adult community. Uh, you also have standards for your, uh, open space and the type of open space that, that would be, um, sought by, by the community. We've tried to build that, that in. So let, let's flip to the...
We have a... I know.
I didn't know if, who was doing this. Um, this is a, is, is, uh, a representation based on one of the early studies that, um, Jim Cassidy had done for industrial use of the property of where the location of approximately twenty acres of the, uh, Land Trust land, the open, dedicated open space might be located on the property. It was basically used to buffer and, and separate uses within the property itself and to protect Belcher Brook. With the development of the, uh, property as a residential piece, what we're able to do is to increase the amount of land that might be available for, uh, private open space and/or land trust use from twenty to twenty-six acres. Uh, so we, we think we've, we can, uh, substantially increase the amount of open space on, on the property. The center area of the site that I was talking about for the recreation purposes, uh, there, I'll start with, Jim fell in love, uh, he tells me stories that when he was growing up as a, as a teenager, he worked on a farm, uh, here in town and I have the impression it was a, it was a horse farm. And, um, he was looking at some material and found some greenhouses that he absolutely fell in love with. And the gray T-shaped form, uh, on, on that plan would be greenhouses that we'd like, some very attractive, I'll show you some pictures of them, greenhouses that we'd like to build on the property.
Okay. I, I, I under, I, I think I get what's, what's going on with this application, but we do have a deadline of ten-thirty tonight.
Good.
And so, and we do have business that we wanna do, uh, because we have other applicants that are open and waiting. So I know that this is just basically an informal presentation, but I'm feeling like we're falling into this site plan and I don't think we wanna go there yet. I think we just have to figure out if the commission thinks that this is a viable, um, uh, project, if it's something that we wanna see more of, um, should they go ahead with the application? So I'm just gonna sort of take a poll from the commission. Would you like to see more in a formal application for this development? You do? Okay. So Ju- June and Tim shaking his head, Diane shaking her head, Brian, oh, John? Well, I meant, it's for, just for a formal, and Scott Hamel?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I think that you have been successful and, and proving to the commission that you've done your due diligence and you really like to move forward with a formal application. So, and, and I'm not trying to be rude or anything, but I have promised my commission that quitting time is at ten-thirty, because many of them go to work tomorrow morning. And, and I know the public who's still here wants to get going as well.
What is the minimum age?
Pardon me?
What is the minimum age on the age restriction?
It's in your regs, it's, it...
I think it's fifty-five.
Five or older and there cannot be any children under eighteen or eighteen and under.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. Okay. And so we're just gonna, no.
One statement.
No, you can make a statement, but honestly, I've got, I've gotta get people out of here by ten-thirty.
I just wanna say that this property has been looked at awful lot. I know you guys know that.
Sorry, I should've done that.
I've seen twenty, twenty-five different concepts, since nineteen eighty-six. I think this is probably the best proposal I've seen. That's it.
All right. So I think it's the concessions of the commission that will be looking forward to your formal application and then you'll have a lot of time. So thank you. No problem. Okay. I'm gonna kind of move on really quick if I can. We're on to deliberations. Uh, the first we're gonna tackle is a special permit site application for Sal Morello for the construction of the nine-one story metal butler-style buildings at Four Rod Road. Commissioners, um, we're in deliberations. Um, I, I'm, I'm not sure how strongly all of you feel, but, um...
If you like, I, I can make a motion and then we can discuss.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed, um, application, uh, subject to staff comments and including that handicapped parking be modified as necessary, um, with the building... And including that handicapped parking be modified as necessary with the building official and town planner. The property not have public address systems. That was one of the questions that I asked early on. So there will be no public address systems associated with the project. The hours of operation to be determined and worked out with staff. That additional shrubs will be added to the project to screen the parking lot in the northeast corner facing Four Rod Road. That the Norton Road entrance will be gated. And that lighting fixture styles will be worked out with staff to find something that's more.
Aesthetic.
Aesthetic.
Yeah, he claimed you couldn't do it because it was, because that's where the bearing wall would be for the divider.
Okay, so that's my motion.
Okay, that's the motion. Do we have a second? Okay, second by June Daly. Start a discussion.
The only thing that I would like to add is that no street parking.
Okay. I'll amend the motion to include that.
Okay.
Signs be put up on Four Road, on Road No Parking.
That's what he said.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Street parking, but if the signs are put up there to say no street.
That's what we meant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That's good.
Scott Hamel, do you have any comment about this?
No.
Okay.
So the traffic authority, which is the police department, has the authority over on street parking. The commission does not.
Oh, maybe they just need to inform their people that there will be no street parking. When they sign the lease or whatever.
And to the commission.
Okay. All right. Any other deliberations?
I only have a question about that big parking lot again that I questioned. And looking at it and hearing the discussions, I think that parking lot probably could be half the size of it. The parking to be.
Away from the house.
Back of that building number seven, I think you said it was. Okay. That line of parking be there, but the parking towards Four Road, half of that parking lot be eliminated. You know, and, you know, and just get that buffer away from the property, the Four Road. And that'll put that property big enough, far enough away. As the other developments on Four Road, the similar to ones have been pushed away from the road. You know, so it just brings that, whatever size that parking lot is, divided in half, that one's smaller.
Yep.
And, you know, it's head-in parking to the building, you know, for their headlights are against the building, not facing the street.
Yep. Okay. Anyone else?
I don't know, reducing the parking is going to make a big change, especially when they're going to work with staff on the buffering on that. They've extended it wider than they need to. And he gave good reasoning, I felt, for their business purpose to maintain the parking spaces. I'm concerned about that.
Okay. All right.
I would agree with Commissioner Daly on that one. Even if we reduce it, then we just will be leaving it open for further expansion in the future. And I think that the numbers of, not every shop is going to just have two employees makes sense. If you have three or four, you might need that overflow parking so people can, you know, end up parking in a parking lot rather than in the road, if that's not something that we have the purview over. Really, I believe as long as we have some heavy screening, which they're going to work with staff on to make sure that, you know, the lights are blocked from the neighbors, you know, with a green buffer, whether it's shrubs or more trees or anything. And then, you know, maybe some more shrubbery and trees on the other side of the parking lot to in between the parking lot and the building, just to kind of like, give it more of that natural appearance. I think that would be sufficient.
Okay. All right. So anything else? So we have a motion. Do we have a second? And what?
Only other thing that wasn't included in this discussion is about the sidewalks. Whether they're required or not on either of both.
I think my motion would be no sidewalks.
And mending the second? Okay. All right. So everyone's clear on the motion. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye.
We don't have a provision in the regulations for, or in the town for the in lieu of sidewalks. We're looking into the validity of requiring or allowing that in our regulations.
Also, it did seem like all the neighbors were, I mean, much of the, all the neighbors had seemed adamantly opposed to sidewalks.
Yeah. All right. So that's the motion. And I'm sorry, did we get Scott Hamels?
Oh.
Oh.
Was it yes?
No.
No.
No, he's a no. He's a no.
No.
Okay. All right.
Everyone else was yay?
I was a no.
No.
Two no's, but the motion passes, so. It is what it is. All right. The next item up is a zone change application for the Cariotti family. This is the Berlin Turnpike, the three parcels over on Stone Drive. And what's the feel for the commission?
I initially wasn't comfortable with it, seeing the residential property budding. But looking at the map overall, it just seems to make sense that the industrial development is overtaking that whole area gradually, so.
And, okay. Sorry.
No, I just, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Okay. Motion to approve by Ms. Jorsy. Do we have a second?
Second for deliberation.
Okay, second for deliberation, Mr. Rogan. So let's deliberate.
Yes, so even though it's a simple site plan, our attorney did say that we could ask for some special conditions on the parcel. And their attorney seemed amenable to them of giving us more control over the screening and the fencing so that we can make sure it's done to the satisfaction of the neighbors. And then making sure that that lady's property, as a zone change happens and a site plan comes forward, they give us, that we, as the, that's under our purview, deal with that easement or the.
I know, okay. Yeah. Yeah, private driveway and stuff, yeah.
That goes onto their property. So I don't want to like, landlocking that lady from her own house.
Yeah, exactly.
Trying to think of the right wordings.
Well, you're a safeguarder.
Encroachment to the other.
Yeah.
You have some restoration or otherwise.
It's 10:30, so we gotta hurry up.
Yeah, so I guess my two conditions would then be for us to deal with the encroachment in a satisfactory, satisfactory way. And then for us to have more oversight on screening.
And we'll probably get that with the site plan. Okay.
With regard to that, and I will of course defer to counsel, but I don't think on the rezoning itself, you can really put a condition. But what you did get was assurances, I guess, from the applicant, and that's now in the record. And therefore, I think you can use, you know, use that as information when you do review the site plan consideration. At that point, the conditioning and the zone change, and they change who the property is owned by. It's either a zone change or it's not. It's pretty big, that condition.
Our.
We'll get it with the site plan. All right. So we have a motion. We have the second, right? So further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So move. Next up, last up, the text amendment application for Arthur Schaler for the new car automobile dealership.
For the record, I'm recusing myself.
Yes, okay. And.
Scott recused himself.
Yeah, I'm recusing myself too from this.
Okay.
Man, sure.
So what's left really quick? How do you feel about this? Motion to approve by Mr. Rogan.
A second for discussion.
For by Ms. Jorsy. And so let's discuss.
My opinion is a very, very good thing to happen on the potential property that's been eyesore for hundreds of years. But, and that we help a large owner of business in town. Restrictions of the parking, either the fencing or whatever, I guess we got to bring up the.
Oh, we're going to do it all. Site plan.
On a site plan.
This is only for allowing them to do that. So we have a motion? We have a second? Anything?
I just like that it's a special thing, but no, it's not a purview over it. I also like that stated as new cars. Now we're not getting another new car. That's where I'll just figure it out from the other.
Yeah, we got a lot of that stuff.
Did we need your safety thing added to that with securing the lot at this time that's later?
I think if you want to specifically add it as a consideration in the site plan for the special permit, then you would want to put it in at this time if you feel you have the discretion within your site plan, right? Within your special permit regulations, just to administer it at that time, that's fine too. I just think it's that added layer of protection for the lots to be secured and contained, I guess. So they don't become outside the limits of what was approved. Presuming they come in with a site plan that shows where the parking's going to be if there's a parameter there.
I'd like to amend my motion to include what's said in the plan.
Contained and secured.
And. So what I said during the hearing was.
And I'll amend the second.
Satisfaction of the commission.
Or agree to the amendment, yes.
Have Ms. Jorsy, who's amended the second. So further discussion on this matter? Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So move. Approval of the minutes, May 1st. All right, thank you. Approval of the minute. I didn't find any problems with the minutes for May 1st. Does anyone have questions? I approve, Mr. Daly has the motion to approve. Second by Mr. Zigmont. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Doing the minutes for May 15th. Here from Mr. Dyken. All right, May 15th, everyone has a chance. Motion to approve by Mr. Zigmont, second by June Daly for the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have no time for planners' comments.
Planner has no comments except for the fact that you do have a special meeting next week and we have packages here for you to pick up on your way out the door.
Oh, joy.
So I want to say a motion to adjourn at 10:36, my apologies.
Good night.
I make a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Motion by Ms. Daly.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Jorsy for the discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Good night. Thank you for joining us, Bill. All right, get your packets.
Yeah.